The January 11 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Will the Secretary call the roll, please?
Rick Morrison. Nancy Pease.
Here.
Jim Frederick.
Sir.
Connie Yoshimura. Tony Jones.
Here.
Arthur Eishem.
Here.
John Weddleton.
Yes.
Bruce Phelps. Stacy Dean.
Mr. Phelps and Ms. Dean are excused this evening. We have minutes from the October 5, 2009, meeting.
Madam Chair, move for approval of minutes of October 5, 2009, for the Planning, Zoning Commission.
Okay. Is -- and that's been seconded by Mr. Frederick. Are there any corrections or changes?
Got a couple.
Okay.
Page 22, third paragraph from the bottom, third line. It said, "He did not agree with the concept." And I believe that was "did not disagree." Do you get that? On page 22, third paragraph from the bottom that starts with page 21, "Land Disturbing Activity." On the third line, it says, of a definition period, "He did not agree." And I believe it's "he did not disagree."
Okay, I'll check that.
Okay. And then on 23, it says Commissioner Blank, and I think that was me. That's the -- about in the middle.
Okay.
Then page 28.
What paragraph was the Commissioner Blank in?
Third.
Third, okay.
Well, on 28, the paragraph starts with page 23. On that issue, we held it. So on all the other ones, we put "hold," and this one doesn't say "hold."
Could you repeat which paragraph that was?
Just page 28, on the second full paragraph that starts with page 33, "Site Dis-Dis-Dis- Triangle." We held that one, so it should say after it, "This item was put on hold." And that's all I've got.
Okay. Any other changes, Ms. Pease?
There were two points that didn't seem quite clear to me, but the people who made them aren't here, but let's see if we can look at them anyhow. On page 19, the third paragraph from the bottom, it says, "Commissioner Phelps felt this definition should be looked at," again noting the definition is not inclusive but is also inclusive too.[213.12][213.12](Laughter.) And I don't know what that was supposed to mean, and since he's not here, (laugh) I guess I'll just...
I listened -- sorry to interrupt. I listened to that three times, and that is exactly what he meant when he said it. I think what he -- my interpretation was that he -- that it was both.
Okay. But he's also inclusive too. Yeah, that -- it's just awkward wording. It is what it is. Sometimes, unfortunately, it is what it is. Okay, what was your second?
The second point on page 29, in the paragraph that starts page 38, "Street Local." It says, "Mr. Davis indicated his understanding that the street remains from a subdivision and may pass from one subdivision to next." Maybe that's just what he said, but I didn't understand it.
We can clarify that with him?
Okay, thank you.
The word "remains."
Well, that remains from a sub-
Subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. So is there any objection to approving those minutes with those changes and corrections? Hearing none, and I'll note for the record, Ms. Yoshimura is here. And on the -- okay, then, the next item on our agenda is disclosures.
Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
Just that on the -- I had a call from a friend who was considering testifying on one issue and wanted to know when it would come up on the agenda, and I said I didn't know because one commissioner had indicated an interest in changing the agenda around, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Frederick?
Yes, on the public hearing cases, G1 and G2, I should note that I'm a resident of the nearby neighborhood, probably about a half a mile from the ASG pit, and within a mile or so of the Lucy pit, not within sight or earshot of either one. So I may know more about them visually and experientially than other people, but I doubt that I have more than -- more of an axe gun than any concerned citizen, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Yoshimura?
Yes, I have been previously recused from G1 and G2, and as it relates to the Special Order of Business C2, I would like to disclose that my spouse is a member of the homeless task force, and we have had discussions about homelessness and alcohol-dependent housing. However, for those of you that know me, know that my spouse and I frequently disagree, and he has no influence over my opinions whatsoever.
(Laughter.) Sounds like the Jones household, Ms. Yoshimura. Ms. Pease?
Okay.
I guess the important thing to say there would be, if you have any knowledge that you gained through your exposure to this issue, would you please bring it out through questions of staff and confirm it through staff? Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Yoshimura, since you have previously been excused from G1 and G2, that will continue this evening. Okay, Ms. Jones?
I have no known disclosures on any of these items here. My -- one of the attorneys in our office represents people that are involved in the liquor industry, but I don't see that that has any relationship whatsoever to this issue with regard to housing, but this is a housing issue, and so I'm just making that disclosure. It's out there.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Morrison, anything to disclose this evening?
I have no disclosures. Occasionally, I do drink liquor, but don't expect to find myself in the use of one of these homes.
(Laughter.) Neither do I.
Mr. Weddleton?
No disclosures.
And I have none.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is, as I understand it, an information item. It's under Special Orders of Business, and this is the ordinance regarding severe alcohol-dependent housing. We are not being asked to take any actions, as I understand it, Ms. Chambers.
Correct.
But it's being brought before us as a courtesy.
Correct.
I did receive a phone call today from Dan Coffey with the Assembly explaining the process regarding this proposed facility in our community, explaining the nature of the ordinance did not require it to be heard, did not require the ordinance that would allow this type of facility to be heard by the Planning Commission prior to it being adopted, considered, and then potentially adopted by the Assembly. If the proposed ordinance is adopted by the Assembly, then there would be a requirement for a conditional use of some nature, however it's configured by the applicants, to come forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a hearing.
Fairly correct, Madam Chair. I can -- I drafted the ordinance, did a ton of research on it, would be happy to answer any of the questions at this time, but what we're doing, the Assembly has requested, as you had stated, they find this in the interest of the public, health, safety, and welfare, to do this very quickly. There's a -- any project that may come forward would have to comply. This is not waiving any requirements for any specific project or anything like that.
Absolutely not.
So it's a matter of that they wanted to let you know that the hearing will be on February 16. If any of the commissioners, as this is a legislative item, if you have any questions or concerns that you want, the Assembly -- Assemblyman Coffey and Assembly Chair Flynn introducing it, if you want them to be aware of anything or any questions or issues about this, please email them. You can email them directly to myself, and I will get them to them to be aware of it. If you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer any of them, of course.
I don't know how much you can answer, since we don't really know
Right.
-- totally what's being proposed, and I think it would be best that we wait until we have an application in front of us. I would, however, recommend that people, if you have things that you would like to see considered, being addressed in a conditional use application, whatever configuration it might take, that you send those to staff.
Correct.
I will give you an example of one, it's actually kind of two, that I mentioned to Mr. Coffey when I spoke to him today. It was the issue of public safety.
Right.
And it wasn't just public safety for the community, it was equally safety for the residents. I will be interested in seeing what their plan is for monitoring, for fire protection, and those types of issues for whatever facility they may propose. So, you know, and if there are other types of concerns commissioners may have, whether it be landscaping, and I don't know what might be practical in that area, or even desired by the applicant, but I would request that you send those issues to staff.
Correct.
To be addressed.
And if you have, through the chair, Madam Chair, if you have any questions also as to why any of these standards are drafted like they are, feel free to call me directly. I'll be happy to talk to you about that. And as Ms. Jones had said, keep in mind, when you're working with a particular work group regarding this ordinance, developing this ordinance, crafting it, there's -- the department is tasked with the guiding land development in a community for the best interests of public health, safety, and welfare of everyone, as well as the project, as well as the residents in the neighborhood. So it's a balance of everything. We're happy to talk to you about anything, and if you have any formal issues or concerns or anything to add that you would like to go, those are Assembly members' seminar separately. Thank you.
And I can tell you, just from my day job, I know there -- that HUD has a big effort for homelessness, big effort for communities to deal with the issue, so it's something that's getting a lot of national attention.
Right.
Anyhow, Mr. Eishem?
Yes, I'm just curious, on Section 11, they say that the commission shall review this ordinance within 18 months after approval. That is curious. What are we going to review it for? And if we don't like it, can we do anything? I mean, it's already in place. I would assume if the Assembly approves it, it's an ordinance, so.
Through the chair, there's a couple of things you can do. We have this in a couple of different parts of the code, on a couple of different items, and frequently what happens is, because we know there are some projects that want to come forward, is why the ordinance is needing to be put into effect quick, quickly, is why they're looking at putting an ordinance into effect. What they wanted to do with the work group was, if any of those came forward, wanted the commission to look at it and see if anything needed to be done as far as amending the ordinance, repealing the ordinance, changing the ordinance entirely. And the commission, at that time, in 18 months, the staff would put together a report recommendation, the commission would review it, and if you wanted, if the commission wanted to put forward a different ordinance doing any of those items, amending, repealing, adjusting, or doing nothing, you could put that ordinance forward to the Assembly. So it would be up to the Assembly in the end, but they want, they do want your recommendation, and they are rushing a public process as well, and they didn't want to leave you out in the process of trying to rush this through.
Ms. Yoshimura?
I noticed the zoning classifications where this alcohol-dependent housing as a conditional use can only be in certain classifications with certain criteria as a collector or greater. What would happen if a property became available that did not meet one of these zoning classifications?
Through the chair, if this ordinance was adopted, they would not be able to go into one of those districts. It just wouldn't be allowed, period. It would be prohibited to use.
Could they come to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for some sort of...
They would have to apply for rezoning if they met the criteria to even apply for rezoning to begin with, to rezone this, one of these districts that would allow it. It's similar to a regular homeless shelter currently. A general homeless shelter is only allowed in a PLI district by conditional use, you know, something like that, you know. They would have to, if they're so, they're just restricted to these districts only and only by conditional use. Community Correctional Residential Centers, for example, are only allowed by conditional use and only in specific districts. So they couldn't go on a lot anywhere else if it wasn't zoned properly. Now, if it was on the issue of, in this draft ordinance, some of the standards on page seven of eight, Section 10, similar to what you have on the correction, Community Correctional Residential Centers, like the distance from certain uses, that can be waived by the commission without having to get a variance? And the issue of whether or not it has to be on a street designated as a Class 1 or greater. If it was in the right zoning district, say the RA district, but it wasn't on a Class 1, they would have to apply for zoning variance from the zoning board of examiners and appeals first on that. So that's like an absolute standard, can't be waived by the commission. So if you see things like that where you think, and the parking standard as well, it's a parking standard, if you think that may not be appropriate, or if you think the commission should have a specific, you know, it should have purview area that not have to go through a variance process, or if you think the zoning districts are wrong, comments like that from your experience as commissioners and residents in this community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chambers, for your input. All right. My hope is, before we get on with the rest of our agenda, my, it's the chair's intent to combine G1 and G2 and have them heard together this evening, and we'll take action on G1 first and on G2 second. The petition will have 15 minutes for his presentation. Groups and organizations will be allowed seven minutes instead of five minutes for their presentation, and individuals will be allowed four minutes instead of three. And then we have a regular agenda following after that for a singular ordinance and then Title 21 changes. It is my hope that we move the meeting along swiftly tonight, because if we do, we have no cases on our February 1 meeting, and we could avoid having a meeting for our February, for February 1. And it would save the municipality a lot of money. We wouldn't have overtime for staff needing to come out, and we would get an extra day to stay home with our families. So with that in mind, Ms. Pease?
I didn't hear mention of the Chapter 14 Consent Agenda item. Will that be handled when we handle the rest of Chapter 14?
Oh, I just skipped over it, is what I did, the Title 21 rewrite, the resolution. I hadn't gotten to it, okay? Well, we'll deal with it. Thank you for reminding me. I'm so excited to start the public hearing part of the meeting.
Connie needs to stay for that.
You need to stay for this, Connie.
Oh.
No, I skipped over D1A. My bad.
Madam Chair.
As my teenage grandkids would say.
Madam Chair, move for approval of Consent Agenda item D1A.
And Mr. Frederick. Well, it looks like Ms. Pease and Mr. Frederick had beat you to the punchart. Okay. And there any changes or corrections?
Yes, Madam Chair. Okay. First, a general question. I compared this in reading it, I compared this to the minutes of October in which we first discussed it, but I didn't have in my packet the minutes for whatever December meeting we also discussed it. So I didn't feel I could do a really thorough proof to make sure all the changes were made, but I do have some changes based on the October minutes.
So what are you proposing?
If, in fact, I missed it, if everyone else had the proper December meetings to cross-check it, then I guess I'll, okay. I think on principle, we should be checking the final resolution against the minutes where we voted on it. So if we didn't have all of the minutes, then I think we should postpone this.
To our next meeting?
Yes.
Well, make a motion.
We have a motion.
We do. Well, okay, we did have, now she'd ask a question first, I thought. Now we have a motion, Ms. Pease and Mr., yes, and Mr. Frederick.
In the matter of Resolution 2009060, approval of Chapter 14 of Title 21, I move that we postpone this to our second February meeting.
That would be February 16.
Or at such a time as the minutes relevant to this resolution are delivered to us for our review.
Okay. Is there any objection?
Through the chair, point of vote, it's February 8, or whenever the minutes are ready.
Well, we're not having a meeting in the, for the first meeting, oh, so whatever our last meeting is.
Wait, yes, the first February meeting that you have, yes.
Whatever the date might be.
And I guess I would just look for staff's confirmation. We have some more follow-up on Title 21, so this won't delay the final stamping and approving. Is that correct? No, thank you.
Okay. All right. So now we postpone that, and now we're at G1 and G2. Could I have the staff presentations on both of these cases at this time, starting with G1?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And if they could be brief, please?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Thank you. Be extremely brief. I'll go into the reasons for it all in just a second. We had 184 public hearing notices mailed for this item, lots of phone calls in response, nothing written from any member of the public. The Sand Lake Community Council did submit comments with some suggested conditions. Those are in your package. I would like to spend just a couple of minutes on the department report, and then a couple of minutes on the purchase and sale agreement. And the reason we can be very brief is because this is, by definition, a conditional use for natural resource extraction, but there is no more resource extraction to be done. This is a reclamation project. This is a fill, grade, and stabilize, turn it back to the muni, and then the muni will hopefully, in a timely fashion, get to work on a park or some other public use for the property. Excuse me. The second reason we can be very brief on this is that the lease sets a lot of the terms for the conditional use, and that's why I'd also like to go through the purchase and sale agreement with, for just a couple of minutes. And I'm sorry, I do keep calling it a lease. It's technically a purchase and sale agreement. There is a lease portion in it, which is a lease from the muni to Anchorage Sand and Gravel to access the property to fill and grade the property. So with that, starting with the department report and going right to the standards and some history, this is a conditional use, but it will allow filling of the pit with approved materials per the purchase and sale agreement. It will allow installation of monitoring wells and a monitoring program to check for leaching of contaminants from the pit fill material, and it will provide for a reclamation plan, which includes grading, stabilization, plantings, and so forth. The ultimate intent of this project is to allow for a public park. That will be a totally separate process sometime in the future. It will be a public hearing. There will probably be a rezoning involved, and the park itself will be a public process. I say that a park is the intent that's not guaranteed. The purchase and sale agreement states that the property will be used for park, open space, or other public purpose, and I think we should leave it at that language unless the commission wishes to make a finding that a park is needed in this area, and that is your recommendation. But since this is five to seven years in the future, we should not tie our hands by saying this property will only be a park. The project is going to have most of the standard conditions that are normally associated with gravel extraction, the hours of operation, six days a week operation, no operations Sundays and holidays, so forth. The only thing that's a little bit different is, based on the purchase and lease, this property has one five-year operation, and if it is not completed at that time, the applicant may come forward and request a two-year extension. And you'll hear in a minute that the Sand Lake property across the street has a seven-year abeyance, and that is the grounds for the seven-year abeyance. We've got a five-year fill with a possible two-year extension for the Lucy pit. The minor amendments for time extensions are usually processed as a minor amendment to the Planning Commission, and we will intend to make any extension for this project brought to you as a minor amendment based on the history of the project for the previous five-year period. Okay, getting into the standards, furthers the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, the standards met. There are about eight policies listed on pages six and seven, which are in support of this project. Item C will be compatible, the standard is met. This is certainly going to be a more compatible project than a gravel extraction project would have been, and we have the usual standards for noise and air quality review, reclamation plans, final grading plans, drainage plans, so forth. The applicant has posted a performance bond for the final reclamation of the property. Standard D on page 008, pedestrian and vehicular traffic, the property is fenced and gated, there's no casual access. The property will be limited to one access on Kincaid Road, approximately 80 feet west of West Park Drive. The demand for public services, water for use in dust control, vehicle washing, and so forth, will be trucked over from the Sand Lake gravel pit site. There should not be any increase in demand for services as a result of the fill and closing of the Lucy pit. The trails plan does show a future paved multi-use plan, a multi-use trail on this property. That will have to be addressed during the future parks plan, five to seven years from now. Noise, air, water pollution, et cetera, the standard conditions, DHHS noise regulations apply. A dust control program, air quality plan is required. Well water, groundwater, water in the pit, I will let Mr. Potter go into that in detail, but the municipal groundwater people are satisfied that water in the pit and the filling of the pit and the rest of the project will not affect any groundwater aquifers and should not affect any water wells in the neighborhood. There will be monitoring wells on the property, as previously stated, one up gradient to establish a baseline, two down gradient between the pit and the neighborhood to check for contaminants leaching from the site. Drainage, the standard conditions, there'll be a plan required and final inspection by PMNE. The other information's all been submitted. Most of it is not applicable, because this is not a gravel extraction, it's reclamation. is not a gravel extraction, it's reclamation. Detailed revegetation plan, we've only asked for the barest of revegetation plans, because the intent really is just to stabilize the land until the municipality gets to putting the park in. Hours of operation, the standard, the standard hours apply, no operations on Sundays and holidays. As stated in the purchase and sale agreement, the period is for five years with a two-year extension allowed. Security previously discussed, no materials, item 7 on Page 012, no materials to be removed. It's estimated that at least 900,000 cubic yards of material will be needed just to fill the pit up to existing grade, and then there'll be a lot more fill required for the remainder of the property. Item B, Page 013, access already mentioned, extraction not applicable. And restoration, item 4 on Page 014, it is general, it is minimal, but as just stated, it's going to be a park, that is the intent, and we don't want to over-landscape the property only to have to riff something out in order to develop the park as a park. I'm not going to go through the conditions because they are the standard ones, I would just point out a couple of items that are a little bit different. For condition number two on Page 014 and 015, this is a fill project, the applicant is not to be doing any processing of materials on-site. However, the purchase and sale agreement does specifically allow the applicant to process fill materials, such as the mixing of organic and non-inorganic materials on the site. The rest of the conditions are standard, except down to number six on Page 016, that is the time limit, a five-year approval from, a five-year time period from when the commission approves, with an extension available as a minor amendment for two years per the purchase and sale agreement. And the last condition, number 10 on 017, is the only one that's also a little bit different. All materials that are delivered to the site are to be used for the reclamation of the property. The applicant can stockpile materials for that purpose, and he has in his best management practices, conditions to prevent wind and water erosion. The stockpiling of materials to be used off-site is not allowed, so anything that the applicant brings to the site are to be used for the site. That's the department report, let me just go through the purchase and sale agreement very quickly. The purchase and sale agreement was provided by the applicant as part of his application, Dowell HKM, and it is Appendix B, as in Bravo, if you want to follow along quickly. Page one of the purchase and sale agreement, we have a number of tracts and lots involved, but this case, for our purposes, is only the Lucy pit, which is, can't read without my glasses, tract 7A on the property, and that's identified on some of the maps. As mentioned previously, for the future use, the property shall be used as park, ballfields, or any other proper public purpose as the buyer may elect. The buyer is the municipality, the municipality is now the owner, actually, from the time this was written. The lease, again, the term period for this is five years with a possible two-year extension as a minor amendment. This does require a conditional use because of the amount of material involved, and also because it was specifically stated in the purchase and sale that the Assembly wanted this reviewed as a conditional use. The permitted material allowed for organic and inorganic fill is specified on Page 4. The applicant's aware of that, he's addressed it in his own plan, Anchorage Sand and Gravel has addressed it in the plan. Page 5 has the bond indemnification and items for restoration of the property should the Just for your information, the appendices, D, there's a letter of support from the Parks Department, the Parks Department has determined there is an overall lack of park area in this, park property in this area of about 71 acres. So, it is extremely likely that there will be either neighborhood-sized or community-sized parks ultimately. The final couple of items from the applicant to point out for your information are Appendix F, Anchorage Sand and Gravels, best management practices for fill, and then Appendix G, which is the well monitoring plan, specifies what items are going to be monitored, where the well locations will be, what the water depths are expected to be, and so forth. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Pease? Yes, a couple of quick items. I was going to ask about the monitoring program, could you tell me what, where that is again in the packet, I guess I missed it.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pease, the monitoring program is Appendix G, as in Gulf, that's towards the back of the application submitted by Dowell HKM.
And that will be in the bound volume?
Yes.
Mr. Weddleton?
No, I was looking at the Sand Lake Community Council resolution, and on Page 39, number 5, I don't understand what that means.
Madam Chair, I think what they're, what they're getting at is that as trucks are brought on to the property, there's going to need to be some type of sampling or random sampling, and at least observation of the trucks by the ASG people as materials are brought on to the property. And that is an ASG standard operating procedure, they will be monitoring the trucks as they come in, and they will be doing random sampling from them.
Great, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, one quick question for Mr. Bright. You had indicated that the conditions are standard. I had thought that the hours of operation were generally seven, oh, there it is, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, um, sorry for that confusion. Page 11 said 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, but I see that the condition says 7:00 AM to 6:00. Thank you.
My typo, you're correct, Commissioner Pease.
Okay, thank you. Are you hearing the next case?
Yes, Madam Chair. In regards to Case 2010-007, the Sand Lake fill site, the applicant, ASG, has requested to put this reclamation site into abeyance for seven years, and to, has requested a 10-year time extension for the reclamation fill operations. Both of those are minor amendments. This becomes a major amendment because they've also asked to add 21.8 acres to the restoration plan. That was an area reserved for a future, possible school site, it won't become a school any longer, so it's just, it's a part of the original tract, it's, it was reserved, and now it should be added to the reclamation plan. Everything else about the project stays the same. During the time of the abeyance, the petitioner will have to provide an erosion, erosion and sediment control plan. Actually, let me, let me get to that in a moment, I apologize. I meant to say that on Page 10 of the, the application, the applicant says that they will, that they will seed, they will stabilize the soil with a seed mix over the entire site in the spring. All the standards appear to be met for the major amendment, which is the addition of this school site to the reclamation plan. The petitioner's provided a new grading plan that incorporates this 21.8 acres. The conditions begin on Page 8 and continue through Pages to Page 13. What staff has done here is take the conditions from the last approval, and has kept them the same with the exception of a few amendments and a few deletions. Those changes can be shown in bold, italicized, and the deletions with the strike-through. So, you can see that new conditions, 1 and 2, provide an acceptable dust control plan to the Department of Health and Human Services, provide a drainage plan to PMNE. I have three changes that I'd like to make to these conditions right now. The first one is Condition 1 under, I guess the second set of conditions, this is on Page 8, where it says amendment for Condition 1. The change would be in the middle of that paragraph, we have 1,369,000 cubic yards mixed fill, that, and then it's changed to 2.5 million, that should say approximately 2.5 million cubic yards mixed fill. Just to clarify that, it should say approximately, if you could insert the language, insert that word approximately right before that, 2.5 million acres. On Page 10, staff added this new condition H, mitigate tailgate noise on dump trucks, that should be deleted. That has, that is a duplicative condition L, all trucks and equipment used in this operation shall be muffled, achieves the same thing. And the petitioner has said that they will post signs telling drivers not to bang their tailgates. So, I'm asking for Condition H to be deleted. The issues that staff tried to address are addressed in Condition L. The final change that I would like to propose to these conditions is Condition number 8, we're showing a delete, resolve the need for a multi-sector general permit with the EPA. That's correct, that should be deleted, but what should be inserted is provide an erosion and sediment control plan to PMNE. So, that's, achieves the intent of what PMNE needs, Watershed Management Services needs for the site. So, if you could insert the words, provide an erosion and sediment control plan to All the other changes to the previous approval are pretty minor, they're dates, they are updated plans. Condition 6 sort of reorders some of the ingredients for the fill, and these are the perfected, sort of learned, acceptable fill materials. I have nothing else. Be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eishem?
In regards to that item 8, where it will now re-provide an erosion and sediment control plan to PMNE, do you want to attach any dates, or not later than, or 45 days after approval, or something like that? Because they could drag it on for years and years and years, you may want to have it sooner rather than later.
By, provide the plan, prior to the approval of, they will have to satisfy these conditions before they can begin any work, so there's no need for a date.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions of Mr. McGlaughlin at this time? Ms. Pease?
Yes, with regard to, I don't know whether this pit will be completed in stages or not, but is there any precedent for requiring interim ground cover through, say, hydroseeding and watering as part of the pit is filled, or in the case that the pit's filled but the city doesn't do anything with it for a while? Because this is an area of, well, dust, but also invasive species, thistles and that sort of thing out in that area from all the recent construction.
Through the Chair, Ms. Pease, I think, I think that your question says during the time of the abeyance, this seven years, there needs to be ground stabilization and an attempt to mitigate any possible dust to come up from this site, because it's been denuded. That has been addressed on Page 10 of the application, the applicant on Page 10, I'm flipping to it right now, at the very top, it says, "While the project is on hold, the site will be stabilized with an erosion control seed mix to prevent air and water pollution." I sort of bumbled the discussion of that right at the beginning of my comments, but what I was trying to say there was that prior, the first thing in the spring, the applicant will be required to hydroseed the entire area and provide drainage plan and sediment control, I'm sorry, drainage plan and a
Dust control?
And an acceptable dust control plan to DHHS, and that, those conditions should address any concerns about dust control in the area. That'll all be required prior to, during the time of the abeyance, this first development season.
I guess just to follow up, is there any harm in referring to the plan to seed it? I don't know whether there are alternative dust control plans, but is there any harm in referring to the, what you've mentioned on Page 10 of the application?
That would be fine, staff has no objection with adding a condition that the, the area must be reseeded, as stated in the application.
Thanks, I'll work with some wording for when we make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Weddleton?
On the expansion area, that's to the south end of the parcel, that, seems to be that's, I guess looking here, so that does drop down from Diamond Boulevard quite a bit, I guess. If I remember, it says, in my recollection, it was fairly flat, but it's not, so they'd have, they would actually fill it and make it level with Diamond?
Yes, the goal of the project is to make the entire site level with, with the, with the street, I believe.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Mr. Eishem?
Yes, Mr. McGlaughlin, on Page 11, 2R, what are we trying to say there with that wording clearly identified? Are we saying we want to have clearly identified permanent control survey monuments shall I don't know why we give them to zoning enforcement, they just want to, I think we want to provide clearly identified permanent control survey monuments.
Through the Chair, Mr. Eishem, I think that the wording you're proposing is a little bit clearer than what's written there.
Okay.
I think staff just left it as is because this was approved in the, staff tried to change as little in all of the perfections that have been made from the past.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Chambers?
Through the Chair, to answer a question earlier regarding, from Ms. Pease, is a condition under the first part for the, where the department recommends approval of the seven-year abeyance and the 10-year time extension would be a third condition to state that all documents submitted with the conditional use application shall be, become a part of this approval. That's a standard condition that we've done in the past, and the petitioner is, of course, that's part of their submission, they're willing to submit to those all of their restoration plans in case it does take longer. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Pease, you're back in the queue, did you have more?
Not right now.
Okay. Thank you. There being no further questions on either case from the commission, I will open the hearing and invite Mr. Potter to come forward. You have a total of 15 minutes, Mr. Potter, do you wish to reserve some of that time?
I would like to retain 10 minutes for the panel.
2 minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
So, with that in mind, Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter of Dowell HKM, with me tonight is Mr. Sean McNaughton of Dowell, who's been very involved in working with ASG to get to this point. Two ASG representatives, Wes Vander Martin, who's the VP in charge of their operations, and Bob Hayes, who actually functionally takes care of and operates and manages this facility. Also in the audience is David Brayley, who is the geohydrologist under contract to ASG, who's been putting together other well monitoring programs during the evaluation, during the actual who's been putting together other well monitoring programs during the wells and doing the actual water monitoring of not only all wells, but several of the adjacent neighbors' wells to the west of Lucy Street to make sure that the water quality monitoring creates a good baseline and monitors that through the life of the conditional use. As indicated, these projects are tied together, and there's a lot of history here, and I don't have much time, so I'm going to skip over that part and the history. I mean, Ms. Jones knows all about the history. She lived through it at least once, and I'll be happy to answer any questions later on that. Big point is what the staff had just indicated, that our submittals, which include operating plans, well monitoring programs, restoration, seeding of the final grading in the abeyance area on the Sand Lake pit, all of those components of our applications are, in our opinion, based on the language, it's our understanding that those are part and parcel of what the commission would be approving, and those are the conditions that we would be subject to. So those things really are addressed as part of your approval of this, whether they're specifically identified as a conditional approval or not. So I think that helps clarify, just because it is kind of an overwhelming bunch of history and a lot of learned experience over time. So with that, the Lucy Pit status is that it's a closed-grotted pit. It was closed out and the bomb released, back to Fritz-Callumback, the previous owner, some many years ago. Has very steep sides, it's been collecting water on the bottom, that water's perched above the adjacent first aquifer by a minimum of thirty-eight feet from the bottom of the pond, based on our well information and logs now, which are very clear. It is an ongoing liability for the municipality, who is currently the owner. And as the commission and those of you that were here remember, there was an elementary school site selected for acquisition just south of the Lucy Pit, and this planning commission identified that and recommended and adopted a plan to say that that was the selected elementary school site. At the same time, a middle school site was selected at the south end of the Sand Lake pit area on the ASG side. Subsequent things, slowdowns in the economy, I guess, payment schedules to the banks for White Raven, resulted in a situation where what would have been and what had been referred to as their most prized residential property, all of a sudden became a prized school site for middle school. They met with the school district and a deal went forward to acquire a middle school site in conjunction with the elementary school site on the Lucy Pit side of Sand Lake Road. With that, the twenty-six-plus acres that had been identified at the south end of the ASG's property as a middle school site and was the basis for the most recent modification of the grading plan and expanded fill area has been modified significantly. So we are back here for a couple of things. One is that since the city owns a liability and used the fill rights to the Lucy Pit as part and parcel of the payment to White Raven in exchange for the middle school site, the only operator that stepped forward to respond to the RFP was Anchorage Sand and Gravel. They have an awful lot of experience, having worked the Sand Lake fill site for approximately twenty-six years, a good relationship with the community, and continue to pursue that. They have, over time, installed infrastructure at the Sand Lake site, including a truck wash area, a paved apron area, concrete structure for the scale house and that, so that when the truck leaves the property, it actually gets sprayed off on the undercarriage and the wheels, so there's not tracking of metal material out under the roads. The idea and the reason for the abeyance is that infrastructure and all the fill, because the city has indicated and the neighbors have indicated a desire to have the Lucy Pit filled as quick as possible, so that it's not an attractive nuisance any longer than it needs to be, and that it is filled and operable as a park or open space learning area adjacent to the school sites. So the idea is that ASG would put into abeyance its operation on the Sand Lake side, the Sand Lake pit, move the concrete structure and pour new foundations, pave out, and put the truck wash facility over a thought state-approved driveway area, use the next five years to seven years, depending on how long it takes in the market, to fill the Lucy Pit, not just up to grade, but based on our plans that we've worked with the community for at least six months, part of the purchase-sale agreement. Also indicates that follow this right, not only does it have to be conditional use, but we have to coordinate with and get approval of the Parks and Recreation Department, and we've also taken the framework plan for the Lucy Pit park development to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they were very supportive. While not formally taking a position, because it was not a public hearing, they determined that that would come later, as it comes forward for the actual park improvement. But the grading plan has been reviewed by the community, the Parks and Recreation Department, and the Parks Commission. So with that in mind, the full effort of everybody would be to put a control fence around the Lucy Pit, which is not there now, so that attractive and easy access into it by others than those who are actually operating there can't occur. We fill it a career over the next five to seven years and get that done. So when that site is left, it would be created as shown and planted with seed and stabilized and with a sedimentation pond and hooked up to the storm drainage that is in the West Park subdivision. Then at that time, the rash base material and equipment would be moved back over to the Sand Lake side, and fill would continue over there. For the period of the abeyance, there'll be a little bit of continued grading that would occur on the existing Sand Lake side. Get that done, and the plan is to plant the grass by June first of this coming construction season. That would provide dust and erosion control and be done with that. And it would be left in that condition, controlled by blockages at the driveway for that seven year, five to seven year period. And once they move back, then they'll continue their fill marching further south to Diamond based on the grading plan that's shown. Now, I should point out that if you recall the grading plan that was associated with the middle school, the elevation of the fill was quite high, because Aunt Crusoe and Gravel was trying to maximize the amount of fill in that smaller area. They've now physically dropped that grade down, both in the field and in the plans, so that we create more terraces that are falling down towards Diamond Boulevard. Long-term, the area could be used as ball fields, soccer fields, association with Jade Street Park, could be a commercial greenhouse and nursery area, could be just plain open space. ASG will retain the five acres at the intersection of West Diamond and Sand Lake Road, will probably come in for a rezone and master plan for that five acres in the future. That's a piece that was not excavated out and was left basically at grade with the adjacent streets and is good material that is constructable. The remaining area has backed since about nineteen eighty-three, have been determined that there would be no structural foundation and habitable structures allowed on the area to be filled. It is quite deep fill, the fill gets shallower as you head south. So with that in mind, we do have, and as Ms. Jones can attest, we do have support of the community council. Their conditions have been worked in to our operations plan and water monitoring program for the wells, so we come with AFO support. Not an easy task. We will continue to monitor the wells, and there is an ongoing requirement, as we currently have in the Sand Lake side, that there is an annual report submitted to the city that shows where the fill occurred, if there's been any complaints and all that. So we'd be continuing, basically, with the operation that we've had in the past. I think we have a good track record in the community, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. You have a total of about five and a half minutes for rebuttal. Ms. Pease, and then Mr. Eishem.
Through the chair, Mr. Potter, you indicated that you'd worked with the Sand Lake Community Council and worked their water quality sampling concerns into your protocols, and comparing their letter in our packet on pages eighteen and nineteen, they did ask for some conditions of that monitoring program that I don't see in the application. So specifically, or for example, the council asked on page nineteen in item four that the monitoring wells be sampled at least twice yearly for at least five years after beginning of replacement and so on. And it looks to me that the groundwater sampling plan, in page five of appendix G says, four times a year, the first year, and then once a year after that. So have you actually come to an agreed-upon water sampling plan?
Actually have David Bailey come up and address that issue, because he actually coordinated with Jim Winter, the geohydrologist working for the South Anchorage Concerned Citizens Coalition.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, I'm David Bailey, Bailey Henry, Arctic Consultants. And we've had the Sand Lake Community Council's, or the Sand Lake Consumed Citizens Consulting and Gravel, just as Jim Winter, and he and I have had several back-and-forth exchanges. And I'm not certain that, you know, everything's been fully resolved there. Jim Winter's initial position was that they wanted to, the main issue that the Consumed Citizens and Mr. Winter have is that they wanted to drill deep monitoring wells to deeper aquifers. And so this was the main point of contention between us, and we did finally resolve that with the Sand Lake Community Council's final resolution, where they agreed to back off on that requirement, is to drill deep monitoring wells to the second and third aquifer. Tim, can you provide any further clarification on the final resolution?
This is actually the
Ms. Pease, could you state what you were referring to, and make sure that we're actually looking at the resolution from the community council and not a letter from either Will Rapsen or James Winter that actually was prior to the resolution?
Good point. I'm actually looking at the community council resolution from packet G four, pages eighteen and nineteen, but it does talk about filling the Lucy Pit, even though it's in the application regarding the abeyance on the Sand Lake Pit. And among the, it's dated seventeenth of November two thousand nine, and among the concerns are the one I mentioned, condition number four, that Sand Lake Council is requesting regarding the frequency of testing and how long that should continue after the fill is completed.
Well, I guess the issue is if it's going to be done once a year or twice a year, and we had gone with what David's recommendations had been, which was the much annually after the initial work had been done. That's right, and that protocol is basically following the Alaska Silvage Waste Regulations for silvage disposal sites, which is months per year. And this condition, I see here, they got twice yearly in here, so that's, this was done after we completed our plan. That plan basically follows the Alaska Silvage Waste Regulations of the initial period of background sampling, four samples per year, and then once annually thereafter.
And how long are you willing to continue? That didn't seem to be spelled out in the groundwater, in your monitoring plan.
Right. I believe ASG's position is that they will continue to do it as long as they're operating on the site.
We in our previous approvals for excavation have sometimes requested two years, I think, after, I'm looking for Mr. Britt, up to two years after completion. Would that be acceptable?
They had indicated that, and ASG's position has been that they are in this part and parcel for the conditional use period. And at that time, the land in any relation to ASG is really the city's, and it would be Heritage Land Bank and/or the school district that has to continue the monitoring after that. So that's ASG's position.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess one more question, this is kind of to Mr. Britt. The parameters, the, I guess, I would call them threshold tolerances, are those, have those been reviewed, are those standard? Have they been reviewed by Watershed Management Service or by the groundwater protection staff of the muni?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pease, yes, they have. I'm not qualified to comment on them. All I can tell you is that the groundwater people with the muni were satisfied.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Eishem?
Mr. Potter, the only question I have is that, is it realistic to expect enough fill to come in there in five to seven years to fill the Lucy Pit? Are you going to go back and ask for an extension?
That's a great question, and, you know, the Sand Lake side has been an absolute mirror of the developed economy in the city. So now that we've kept records for the last twenty-six years, now going on twenty-seven, of annual reports showing how many cubic yards of material, at the low point of the eighties, it dipped down to where there were, if you can believe it, about twelve hundred cubic yards, that's it, of material. That was actually deposited there. That shows, you know, when fifteen thousand jobs were lost and thirty thousand people moved out of town, there wasn't a lot of dirt being moved. And then it steadily picked up with the economy, and there have been years where it's been three, four, five hundred thousand cubic yards. So if you average the amount of material in a year at about two hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards, which is kind of the middle of the pack, when you average what we've seen, that, yeah, you could do it within five to seven years. Our hope would be that if we had some big projects and three or four really good years, that it would be nice to be up there sooner rather than later. So the world desires to do it within five years or less. But again, it's absolutely dependent upon the economy.
Mr. Weddleton?
There's a couple of conditions on the G two that aren't on the G one, just for operating. One is that you say you'll have portable restrooms, and I guess we deleted that white noise. Is that something that could be added?
If it's, all the equipment is the same equipment that'll be operating at both places, so if you want to say that the operating equipment on-site is done with white noise or motion detector type backup beepers is what we're talking about, so you don't hear that beep, beep, beep that's so annoying, that's fine, because it will be the same equipment. They already have those mounted on the equipment at this time. But what we wanted to avoid is that we don't necessarily have control over every contractor's putting that type of equipment on their truck. So the way that we're attempting to operate is most of the material is being brought in by side loaders now, so there really isn't a backup movement most times. They actually come in, side bump it, and then wipe the truck and then pull out. So it's not that necessary. But if we had to say everybody that wanted to dump material, they had to have a white noise, motion detector, backup beeper, they'd be resistant in the marketplace, and not everybody could do that. So then it becomes not just a policing problem, but a cost impact, and then all of a sudden they're hiring stuff to the valley rather than phone up the Lucy Pit. pit and taking care of a, a very attractive nuisance that is the cities to worry about.
The one we've been trying to fill for years.
And then there's a comment from traffic that a site lighting plan has not been addressed. Is that something we should be looking for?
Um, I, I'm not quite sure what the city wants for a site lighting plan.
Must be designed to not allow glare onto public roadways or into surrounding properties.
No, that's not a problem.
But thank you.
Okay. I don't see any further questions in the queue at this time, Mr. Potter, so I'm going to open the public hearing. And you do have, um, six and a half minutes. And you'll help me remember that. Okay, the hearing is open, and so if you could state your name for the record for us, sir?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Frank Rast. Um, I'm a resident on Sea Cliff Street, approximately three hundred feet north of the north boundary of the pit. My comments are on page thirty-three of the packet. I don't know why I have to spend time repeating my comments, but essentially, ASG's been a pretty lousy neighbor for the last twenty-five years. They've had five extensions on a fill permit. At each time, they say they're going to revegetate areas and control dust. Uh, if you look at the area photo on page sixteen, you can see that they've got sixty acres of dirt out there with no vegetation on it. Their working face is twelve hundred feet south of the north boundary. A responsible operator would have graded north or south in stages and vegetated as it, as it moved south. What ASG has had no plan, that I can see, for the last twenty years. They just filled, filled areas, graded them, they haven't revegetated. In the summer, when the wind blows, uh, you don't know if you're in Sand Lake or Iraq because you can't see with all the dust coming off that site. Now, my understanding is they've agreed to seed the whole area and lock away for ten years. Uh, I've got no objection, uh, they should seed the whole area, but the north thirty-five acres, they've got a grading plan. I have no, I don't understand why they can't grade the thirty-five acres now and seed it so they have to go back in there again in ten years. If they have a grading plan, you can see on the photo, you know, where their entrance is and where their haul lot is, going, uh, kind of diagonally across the site. The north thirty-five acres, there's no reason they can't finish grading that now if they got a grading plan and seed it. Then they never have to go back in there again. There's been, like I said, we've been lousy neighbors. I talked the last two years ago about being some seeding out there. And the only seed that's happened the last five years is a summer, uh, when I went through along the north boundary. So now the north hundred and fifty feet has been seeded. But that's only, but I usually pay for that, not ASG. So I, uh, if they want to lock away from the site for ten years, at least they get the north, they should be able to get the north end done so they don't have to go back in the north end again. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has, but no comments.
Thank you, Mr. Rast. Are there questions? Ms. Pease?
Yes, just while we're all looking at, um, Mr. Rast's letter, would staff have a problem with requiring any of the conditions that he requested in, in the paragraph that begins an ESCP plan?
Um, we believe that that's, uh, that's already been covered in the conditions that, uh, that are existing. There's a bond already for, um, on page eleven of case two thousand and ten dash oh oh seven, performance bond in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, um, guaranteeing restoration. We have conditions for an acceptable dust control plan, drainage plan, and the applicant's going to seed everything. On page twelve, we talked about, um, the, the condition number eight that's being deleted. What the words that are being deleted there, resolve the need for a multi-sector general permit with EPA. Well, that's changed, um, from EPA to ADEC. So we've, we've, we've sort of substituted that, provide an erosion and sediment control plan to PM and E. And Steve Ellis, the Watershed Management Services, uh, the head of that division, has said that he's going to watch this closely to make sure that there's no tracking of any, um, any mud off the site. Uh, I think that those address the conditions. I'd leave the rest to the, uh, the applicant to respond.
Mr. Weddleton.
This director of staff right now is on, basically, these conditions are the same as they've been for many years. It would be that there would be dust control, but apparently that's not working. What would change?
Well, um, the, uh, those conditions that I enumerated, those are, those are conditions that they, that are applied to the seven-year abeyance period. I can only say that, um, that the agencies that are responsible for, um, you know, monitoring and evaluating and, uh, ensuring that these things get done will do their jobs. I have nothing more to say.
Are you comfortable with that?
Well, the basic problem I have has been is that planning, they've been working on a reclamation bond. If they require to be a grading permit and under P and E building safety, then you can call building safety, they'd go out there and become confirmed to the, uh, um, to the plan. But in the past years, you call planning and this thing has been buried so long and they've got different planners that they say call air quality guy. And you call air quality guy, there's been no enforcement, no teeth in anything. Uh, like I said, they've been operating basically under the same reclamation bond since the nineteen eighties. And every five years, they've been extension and they say they're going to vegetate, but there's never been any enforcement. Planning isn't set up to be enforcement of, of dump sites. Building safety is. But the problem is, is that this is under building safety's purview, it's under planning department's purview. So that's been the basic problem the last twenty-five years. And basically, ASG has had no enforcement. So, uh, they basically operate and people complain and, you know, nothing's done because there is no enforcement.
Mr. Isham.
You know, that, that was kind of my, my question. Have you submitted a, a complaints that were to, uh, to, you know, code enforcement, anything of that nature?
Well, you know, yeah, and you just get to run around. You call planning, they say call Steve Morris, air quality guy. And as I talked to the last a couple of years ago, and that's acknowledged to me on the firm that it hasn't operated very well and wanted to change things. But, uh, you know, it changes money and since it costs a lot to do things right, they, they haven't done things right. And like I said, I think the lobby thinks right now that I bow, they've made all these commitments, but, you know, like I'm saying, it is the north thirty-five acres, right now, their plan is just going to seed it and they're saying come back in ten years and fix it. There's no reason, if they've got a grading plan, they can't finish off the north thirty-five acres, get that seeded, they never have to go in there again. And then you can, you know, they promising to seed the rest of it and then finish off the, the south forty acres. But, you know, their plan right now is just to throw seed on it and lock away and then they'll come back in ten years and they're going to create the same problems again. Like I said, this north thirty-five acres, they're very easily going to come back in ten years and tear it up again. They should be able to grade that now and finish it. They've got dozens of forty, you can see how far they've filled it to the south and they haven't vegetated anything.
Thank you.
Mr. Rast, I do want to assure you that if you note violations, not only in these pits, gravel pits in Sand Lake, but any other land use violation. If you could allow me to finish, sir. You call code enforcement again and again and again. If you don't get results, you call the mayor's office, you call the municipal ombudsman, you keep calling until someone pays attention. I have. And I, and you know, and eventually you will get results. I know because I've served on this body for many years that there have been effective conditions in, of approval and those pits in Sand Lake. And so if enforcement hasn't been happening, it hasn't been because the conditions haven't been there, it's because someone hasn't been doing their job or the, you know, uh, and getting, and getting the job done. So I'm sorry you've had this experience, but please know you can make a difference. And I thank you for coming out tonight. Mr. Morrison has a question.
I appreciate you coming out and, and sharing your concerns and, and what's going on in there. Thank you very much for taking the time and for your letter. This development's been going on for a long, pretty time now. And I can remember when that whole area was one great big pit. And I think in your letter, you said you've been there for twenty-five years.
My wife has. I've been there ten years, yeah.
Okay, well, and I'm sure she remembers the time when that pit. Is the, the dust problem better now that, that most of that area's been developed? Is it, is it improving or is it still the magnitude that it was back before?
The dust problem was bad last summer because we had rain. But, but, uh, when the wind, when the schmucks come in, it's dry, the schmucks come in from the south, there's huge dust clouds that come out the site. And, uh, uh, like I said, most times a year, it's not bad, it's just when it's dry and the wind's blowing. Uh, but, you know, again, there's, there's no reason, they should have sixty acres of open dirt out there. And there's no reason the north thirty-five acres can't be graded and finished off now. I mean, like I said, their current plan right now is just seed the whole pit and lock away and then come back in ten years and finish grading. When they've got all this material here, there's no reason why they can't finish the north part now and never have to go back in there again. Now, up until five years ago, the north three hundred feet was vegetated. And I think they scratched their heads and looked and said, oh, we didn't fill that high enough, we can finish, put more fill in there. So they went back there and put more fill in and then they seeded it. So it's actually worse now than it was five years ago. It's five years ago, the north three hundred feet was vegetated. But then they realized, hey, we can put some more fill in at seven bucks a yard and make some money. And like I said, the vegetation that's been done the last five years was the north hundred and fifty feet was done last summer, it hasn't really paid for that, not ASG. So they've done nothing out there in the last ten years for revegetation that I'm aware of. And, and again, they've been a very poor neighbor. And there's no reason, like I said, right now, they can't finish off the north thirty-five acres and never have to go back in there again. Now, the way it is now, what they've asked for is to come back in ten years and, and then mess it up again.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weddleton, one last question here.
I have a question for staff. Is it, would it be possible to say that that area must be seeded before they can start putting stuff in Lucy pit?
Through the chair. Uh, don't believe that condition's necessary, but yes, you could. You wouldn't have any objection from planning.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming out tonight, Mr. Rast. Is there anyone else that would like to testify in this matter? Anyone at all? Hearing and seeing no one, Mr. Potter, you have six and a half minutes. You call it six?
Madam Chair, maybe the Commissioner and I.
Oh, you, you have six minutes. I'm sorry, stand corrected.
Let me see if I can do it in two. First off, in, in the recent discussion that you just heard, and I wish, I know it's here, but maybe I'll-
I'll try it quick.
This one?
Yes.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
So with the Sand Lake pit, now that we're talking-
Can you hear him?
That the area, your gentleman was correct, uh, water utility did come through first.
Uh, you're not on- Try the other one, Mr. Potter.
I beg your pardon, it's a delay sound, and I do believe you are on.
You're on now.
Okay. It's interesting. We tried it before the hearing, so. Sorry for the funny microphone to carry around, but that's the best we got. So, uh, AWW do did put in a big, uh, main line up here. Um, they did seventy-five feet of, um, reseeding. Uh, ASG, uh, did the remainder of the area. At this time, uh, about the first of October, the southern or the northern two hundred and twenty feet of this site over to about here and then shaping up like this was seeded with a dormant seed mix that will come up in the spring. So it sits under the snow and then as the snow goes off, moisture from the snow germinates and comes up early in the spring. So you'll see that this area will be green, uh, when the snow comes off. Um, ASG will finish up this corner so that the northern two hundred and twenty feet is at final grade. Part of the question is, that's been talked about, uh, as Frank indicated, that there's no reason why this couldn't just be finished graded. There's not enough material here right now to finish the grade at the approved grade levels, um, and per plan. So what ASG would do would be to simply smooth it off, seed the area, the northern two hundred and twenty feet would be a hundred percent done, never have to be touched again. And then as they come back after the abeyance is over, then they would bring more material in here. If the commission wants this to occur, then the Lucy pit can't start until this reaches whatever level you want it to be. Our recommendation is that let us get the northern two hundred and twenty feet done. You'll see that when the snow's gone, it will be green. This corner will be regraded and finished graded. This will be smoothed out, but it will have to be regraded, more material brought in after the Lucy pit's done. And then as it reaches final grade, it will also be seeded. Um, and we can have this done by June first, this corner over here. And you'll see when the snow comes off that this will have seed that's germinated. Certainly, um, he knows where I work, um, that's the other thing. I've been involved with this project and I have a certain level of personal pride, uh, and responsibility. And likewise, you can call me, Dalage Can, five six two two thousand, and after you yell at me, then I get on the phone and yell at my client. Uh, and we can make things happen. So I think that we've got it covered and, uh, that would be our way to approach that and address that issue. Um, with that, we'd be happy to respond to any questions that you may have.
Okay. Can you stop the clock, Madam Secretary? Thanks. Uh, Mr. Weddleton and Mr. Isham and Miss, then Ms. Pease.
So, so your intent is to reseed that north thirty-five acres, uh, the whole thing, essentially, is that right?
The entire area that is filled now will be seeded. The finished grading will only be done on the northern two hundred and twenty feet, and that will be fully seeded and never have to be touched again. So for the five to seven years of abeyance, the area south of that will be seeded, will have dust control and drainage control for erosion, and then it will have to be filled on top of again when the activity picks up. And at that point in time, as grade gets met, we should have an understanding then once you get a certain number of feet that you've ceded that portion. So we have a sequential seeding of the area.
So, so if we added a condition that said before you start filling in the Lucy pit, you would have that north thirty, roughly thirty-five acres seeded, would that slow down your operation or is that-
What I would request is that since we may be into the Lucy pit, uh, in May, uh, because we don't want to set an artificial time from a project standpoint, when the material's available, you want to be able to receive it. If you wanted to set a June first deadline date, that, that seeding will be done, that's acceptable.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Isham.
My question was answered.
Okay, Ms. Pease.
Yes, I have, um, a couple of questions for Mr. Potter. Um, I still didn't find, and maybe for staff, I still didn't find in the monitoring, well, monitoring program, the tolerance thresholds that the municipality is willing to, um, accept. Or I should say, I didn't find any comments from Watershed Management Service or any thresholds in your application. So is this an area that has been addressed somewhere?
And while you're looking for that, um, how does something like, I'm going to, um, as a courtesy, read off a condition that I would propose, see if the applicant has any problem with it. This would be under, um, we knew condition eight, I'd go a little farther than staff proposed.
proposed. And so while the full project is in abeyance, stabilize the site with a non-invasive ground cover and any necessary barriers to control dust, deter invasive species, it should be plant species, and prevent erosion and vehicular trespass. Provide an erosion and sediment control plan, PMNE, showing permanent revegetation for any areas that are at final grade, and these areas shall be revegetated by June 1, 2010.
If you've got that written down, Ms. Pease, I'd like to read it. But it sounds acceptable. But if you've got it written down, I'd like to read through it real quick.
I don't have it written. The way that you can interpret it, probably it's arrows and leaders. I'll try to rewrite it here while we're...
What I just laid in front of you, Ms. Pease?
I'm looking now at the, and there's one for each case there. All right. I have one more question for, I think it's more for, two more questions for staff, but the applicant might want to hear them. And one is on page 10, under condition, small letter G. Says talks about tracking measures shall be submitted to ensure that the tracking of peat on Sand Lake Road shall be contained. Could that read soil or any other debris?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease. Yes, it could.
All right. And I think this shows the date. The article of missing original conditions on page 11, last item, which is a small Roman numeral D. It says the home telephone numbers of the contact people shall be provided to the Chair of Sand Lake Community Council. Could that say instead the 24-hour telephone numbers? I think that's the intent, have somebody that can be reached off hours.
Through the chair, yeah. These are pretty ancient.
There can be a 24-hour, 24/7 number.
We know. It ends with 2000. Okay, I don't have anyone else in the queue.
Madam Chair, I think Ms. Pease had a tolerance issue and a lead-up question, and David Bailey can attempt to clarify your question and give you an answer.
Are you still interested in that answer?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yes, through the chair. We didn't specify tolerance limits or cleanup standards in the plan. The issue is that, there's a couple of standards that could apply. One would be Alaska groundwater cleanup standards specified at 18875.345. The problem is that the natural groundwater in there exceeds Alaska groundwater cleanup standards for arsenic and nitrate already in some residential wells. So I don't know if you want to do that. Another option would be to adopt language from the sideways regulations of comparing background concentrations in the background wells to the down gradient wells and looking for a statistically significant difference. That might be another way of doing it, since we have these naturally occurring exigences of the Alaska groundwater cleanup standards.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions for Mr. Potter, Mr. Friday, I'm going to close the hearing. And the matters rest with the Commission, and we will take action on G3 first.
Kind of right in there.
G1?
Take it away.
G1. I'm reading from last week's, the way they're numbered, instead of from my agenda. Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, in the matter of the case, Mr. Potter, I have to have my... Thank you. 2010-007, the, we're doing 006 first. Sorry. 20, okay, 006. The fill of the tract commonly known as the Lucy Pit, I propose approval with staff's conditions, Department's recommendations on pages 14 through 17 of our packet with the following changes. On item three, I would add a new condition, small letter D, to say that final approval of the groundwater sampling plan by the municipality's Watershed Management Service, which will include tolerance thresholds that reflect no statistically significant difference in the monitored contaminants between the monitoring wells and down gradient naturally or existing wells. And if there's anyone that wants to help me buff that language up, I'll be open to that. The monitoring shall extend for two years after completion of the fill with extended testing if warranted by results that show elevated contaminants. And I would amend condition eight so that it says, it says currently all areas at a minimum shall receive, and then I would add, top soil, I would add at a depth approved by the municipality and seeding.
Do you want to take that in, please?
All areas at a minimum shall receive top soil at a depth approved by the municipality or to a depth. And if Mr. Barrett remembers what you recommended, we could put that number in.
Madam Chair, I do remember there's a choice from the information I received from the urban forester. As little as two inches of properly mulched top soil could be used, or in less strict circumstances, it could go to four or even six inches of top soil required. So I appreciate the suggestion that we work that out with the urban forester and the applicant based on the type of top soil they will provide.
I think Ms. Pease's language is appropriate. Okay, any more?
Yes, I want to do additional finding.
We're not at findings.
Oh, excuse me, additional condition, which I guess would be number 11. And it would be to develop a review process to be approved by the municipality for the mixing and placing of organic fill to ensure that materials, to minimize the risk of soil subsidence and spontaneous combustion.
Nancy, could you repeat that last bit?
Yes. Develop a review process for the mixing and placing of organic fill to minimize the risk of soil subsidence and spontaneous combustion.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Pease?
No.
Okay. Mr. Weddleton has seconded the motion, and he's in the queue. I actually need to allow Ms. Pease to speak to the motion first, unless there are amendments. Mr. Weddleton, did you have an amendment?
I did.
Would you like to offer it?
I'd like to actually start with a question for Commissioner Pease. On this memo from Watershed Management, where, I guess they add a condition, provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Did you add that already?
No, I didn't. So...
Would you accept that then?
Yes. Do you want to make the full motion?
Right. So I'd move to amend the conditions to include the statement from Water Management Services that the applicant must provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan to wastewater management services for approval. Interim stabilization must be addressed while the disposal pit is idle. The applicant must consult with ADEC to determine if this activity requires coverage under the multi-sector general permit for industrial activity sector J.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Does that work? It sounded as though Commissioner Weddleton was addressing the other pits on the east side.
Did I get the wrong one?
No.
Yes.
There's one for the Lucy Pit, and there's one for case 2010-006.
Yes, ma'am, but Commissioner Weddleton made the statement that while the pit is idle or something to that effect.
Mr. May.
So that's not Lucy.
Okay, can we scratch that and I'll read the proper one? Thank you.
Yes, because there's not a second, or Ms. Pease hadn't agreed to it as a friendly amendment.
Okay. So I will get to the proper case comments by Watershed Management Services, which states, prior to commencement of construction activity or fill operations at this location, the applicant must provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan to Water Management Services for approval. Prior to commencement of construction activity or fill operations at this location, the applicant must consult with ADEC to determine if this activity requires coverage under the multi-sector general permit for industrial activity sector J.
Is that, this the correct one, Mr. Barrett? Okay. Do you accept that? The Ms. Pease nodded her head, yes, and she says yes. Okay.
I'd also like to add the condition from traffic engineering that states, a site lighting plan, no, I'm sorry, any lighting for the site must be designed to not allow glare onto public roadways or into surrounding properties.
Do you accept that, Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Okay, we now have 13 conditions of approval proposed. Would you care to speak to your motion now, Ms. Pease?
Yes, Madam Chair. I will be supporting this motion. I think it's fairly clear that the public interest is best served by rapidly completing this pit, hopefully within the original five-year time period. I'd like to add the finding that the municipality's purchase agreement for tract 7A, the Lucy Pit, indicated that this parcel will be for a park, open space, or other public purpose. Therefore, that the public interest is in restoring this pit to a useful purpose. Regarding the conditions, the groundwater sampling fan appeared to not have tolerance thresholds, and we've recommended that Watershed Management Service use sort of a comparison between the current wells and the monitoring wells, because we have heard that some of the current wells have high limits of some of the chemicals of concern or items of concern. I've also requested a continuation, the conditions request to continue, require a continuation of the testing after the filling of the pit. This is a condition that we have used on extraction conditional uses in areas where there's concern about the protection of groundwater, especially drinking wells. The applicant had said that once they're finished, they're done, and it becomes Heritage Land Bank's problem. But we know that sometimes things can take a while to settle out, so it is important to have the monitoring program in place for a period after the fill's completed. One of the conditions added was a review process for the mixing and placing of organic fill. And that is because the application on page 54 talks about only having permitted materials and mixing it that way, but it needs to be, the actual process needs to be reviewed, and there may need to be some kind of onsite monitoring. We added a stormwater pollution prevention plan at the request of Watershed Management Service. And I think that probably wraps it up. This is a site that is in a rapidly developing residential area, and it's important to protect the surrounding uses during the fill and to hope that the fill is expeditious so that the site can be used for beneficial public purposes.
Okay, Mr. McLaughlin.
Madam Chair, I have comments in regards to the next, the second case that you'll take action on.
Okay, I'll recognize you when we get to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Eishen?
Yes, Ms. Pease. In regards to your 3D, the last sentence where you had the monitoring shall continue for two years after completion, I question whether that's appropriate simply because the land will no longer, you know, be under the control of the current contractor, and that if, in fact, monitoring is required, it should probably be whoever the landowner is, their responsibility to do that. And I'm just wondering if you would consider, you and your second would consider dropping that one sentence? If not, I will try and make it get dropped.
The conditional use may not even exist after all of the work is done. It may be extinguished.
I think it's a good idea, but I just question whether the contractor should be doing it. It should be, in my mind, taken over by the Heritage Land Bank, and they should get a contractor to do that additional monitoring. The wells will be there. They'll just have to actually arrange for the samples to be taken.
I don't know if we can legally require a future owner to do it.
Well, I know, but I don't, I question whether we can also require the contractor to do it too, when he no longer is on the site.
When he no longer is involved.
Well, if that's the sense of the Commission, I guess, is there anyone else that's, I'm looking to see if others feel that it's not proper to continue the monitoring program. I don't see why you can't require a responsible party to continue monitoring it.
Well, that's, Mr. Barrett, do you have any thoughts?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pease is correct in the sense that when it has been the same owner, for example, in Chugiak, the pit that is just south of Skyline Drive, just this past summer, a requirement was added that they continue monitoring for two years after. But as I say, it was kept under the same ownership. And I sympathize with Commissioner Eishem's position in the sense now that the muni already owns the land, the muni is ultimately responsible for what goes on. So it's a little difficult to place the requirement upon AS and G when perhaps it should more appropriately be with muni.
Well, won't the requirement run with the land? Or does it run to AS and G?
It sticks, it's with the owner and the land. It's with the muni. Well, then maybe it's okay.
Then maybe it's okay, Mr. Eishen?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I just don't want them stuck... Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I just don't want them stuck with the cost of doing this when it's not their problem. I mean, if the folks at the Heritage Landbank want to hang, you know, hire them to do it for them, that's fine.
Well, we can discuss, I mean, we're at a point where we can discuss it. Mr. Morrison?
Just a comment, it sounds like we have a very complex project that's moving forward and heading in the right direction with the, with good public process. I don't know if this is going for a motion, but I'd just like to suggest that particular position be pulled off because there is already monitoring wells to try to move it forward and there is some question of where this is going to go. And I'd hate to see this whole thing get tied up because of one issue.
I don't think it's probably going to. That's my stance. And so if Mr. Eishem withdrew his, so there's not a motion on the floor to remove it right now, Mr. Morrison. Mr. Weddleton?
Okay, so that's taken care of, then I can move on to another topic?
You can move on to another topic.
Okay. I would just add to the findings that the Sand Lake Community Council supported this project contingent on the water monitoring, which I believe we satisfied. And then a question for Commissioner Pease, did you add in there the findings here that it met the general standards for conditional use approval and so on?
No, I didn't.
Okay, well, I'll add those in, I guess just that statement that this meets the general standards for conditional use approval, AMC twenty-one point five oh point oh two oh.
Okay.
Done, thank you.
Are there any other comments on the matter? Well, I will chime in last. I am very familiar with the, all of the gravel pits in the Sand Lake area because I've been around for a very long time, observing them, approving them sometimes, denying requests sometimes, and reporting some of the unfortunate behaviors in some of the pits to zoning enforcement on occasions. On occasions, I've been known to sit out at the corner of Diamond Boulevard and Sand Lake Road and watch truckloads of inappropriate fill screeching around the corners and heading to dump it, and this is before we got tough on folks. And I'd be right on my phone calling code enforcement to say, "Guess whose truck just spilled slippery peat all over the road again." Well, I'm, I know it's a lot better than it used to be then, I know it's a lot better, but it's time to bring some closure to the gravel pits. And Sand Lake have been trying to get completely restored for decades. It's time, it is time. The Lucy pit is a public nuisance, it is a hazard. We, the citizens of Anchorage, now own the hazard and so it is time to move on, get it done, have some conditions on approval, of approval that are good for everyone, they might be a little tough for AS and G, but they're good for the community. And with regard to the monitoring wells and the requirement to extend it out for a couple of years, I have just a tiny, little bit of familiarity with what kind of monitoring's required when a gold mine ceases operation and for the water quality in that type of a situation, what the state requires for monitoring. And they do require monitoring for sometime, and sometimes for those kind of things, they require it for really long times. So in an area like this where we have people in the neighborhood that have wells and such, two years isn't an extraordinary time to do some additional monitoring of the groundwater. And the municipality, I think, is going to be a good neighbor and continue to do that. It is in the public interest and that's part of the municipality's job is to watch out for that public interest. So I have every confidence it's a good thing to be done. I will be supporting the motion because I think it's about time. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, that motion is approved with all other conditions of approval. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the late comments submitted by Watershed Management Services.
Yes.
Steve Ellis, Watershed Management Services, provided these to the planning department late on Friday afternoon, really evening, and I spoke with, or staff spoke with him about his comments today. And he expressed to me that these two conditions that he's proposing, a SWIP and a multi-sector general permit, would be resolved if an erosion and sediment control plan was required. Those were the, that was the change that I recommended and that Commissioner Pease echoed and added to. So the commission can, of course, do as they please, but I just wanted to bring...
And we often do, Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, of course, just that he explained to me that those conditions were resolved with the addition of the erosion and sediment control plan.
Well, sometimes, and I thank you for that information, but with all due respect, sometimes these things that get resolved, we need to kind of put stuff in writing and it's just helps to keep them resolved. So we'll see what happens with the motion here. Ms. Pease, you're back in the queue.
Oh, yes, do I hear that it's, I pushed the button to make a motion, but I had a question first. Is the ESCP acronym the same as SWPP? It sounds as if, I mean, it's hard to imagine that...
Giving a headache.
That Watershed Management's request for something specific shouldn't be honored. I didn't say that very well, but it's just hard to imagine that we're going to cover everything. If this stormwater prevention plan is spelled out somewhere, shouldn't we go with that?
Normally, yes, but I spoke directly to Steve Ellis and he told me directly that those two conditions that he was recommending are not necessary if there's a requirement for an erosion and sediment control plan. He told me you can rip this up if an erosion and sediment control plan is provided. I just wanted to inform the commission that that occurred. I don't have that in writing to provide to you because that happened just a few hours ago, I apologize.
Thank you. Madam Chair, yes. In the matter of case twenty-ten dash zero zero seven, which is the abeyance of the fill operation in the Sand Lake pit, a motion, a move for approval with the department recommendations on page eight through thirteen of our packet, left the following changes. On, I add, condition number two currently reads, "Provide A," and I would insert "Grading and Drainage Plan" to PMNE prior or as part of the review of the sediment erosion and control plan. And then per staff's request, add a number three, I think this is per staff's request, "All documents submitted with this application are part of the conditions of approval." Those are the new conditions. Then the old condition, number one amended, insert the word "approximately" in front of two point five million. Then on condition two H, which is on page ten, replace the word "peat" with "soil" or On page eleven and twelve, in item, I'm sorry, that was item G that had the word "peat," okay, I did skip, item H should be deleted per staff's recommendation. Then in item T, small r and numeral five, replace the word "home telephone" with twenty-four-hour telephone number, that occurs in two places. Then amend condition number eight to read, "While the fill project is in abeyance, stabilize the site with a non-invasive ground cover and any necessary barriers to control dust, deter invasive plant species, and prevent soil erosion and vehicular trespass. Provide an erosion and sediment control plan to PMNE and Watershed Management Service with permanent revegetation shown for any areas that are at final grade." Revegetation of areas at final grade will be accomplished by June first, twenty-ten. And then add to, um, nope, and I think that does it.
Okay, and that motion has been seconded by Mr. Weddleton. Mr. Eishem?
Friendly amendment. In regards to item eight, where you were discussing the sediment control and erosion plan and the requirement to reseed things at permanent grade, I would also suggest that we have items that are at temporary grade to be reseeded by the same time also because if we don't do that, we'll have dust.
Accepted.
Do you accept, where's my second or?
I do.
My motion people went away.
Can you, the second friendly amendment is item...
Okay, I think that was Mr. Weddleton. Did you agree, concur, Mr. Weddleton?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Mr. Weddleton, you're next in the queue?
No, I'm out, thank you.
You're out, okay. Ms. Pease, would you, were you back in the queue, Mr. Eishem?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second friendly amendment on R on page eleven, just to reword that thing where it's a little clearer, where it says, "Clearly identified permanent control, survey monuments shall be provided," period, on that first sentence.
I'm sorry, which number is that?
It's R, R on page eleven, top of the page.
Could you repeat that?
Clearly identified, permanent control, survey monuments shall be provided, period, for the first sentence.
Okay, are you okay with that?
I am.
How about you, Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Any other proposed amendments? Hearing none, Ms. Pease, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, the Sand Lake gravel pit has been a long-term, decades-long fixture. It's a public benefit to allow this abeyance for the reason that the fill can be directed to the Lucy pit, which is a publicly-owned nuisance that stands to become a public asset if filled. However, in interim, we have applied a number of conditions to have ensured that the concerns at the Sand Lake pit are addressed. Particularly, we have noted in testimony that there has been an ongoing problem of dust and soil erosion because it hasn't been vegetated over the years, although this is, this has been a condition apparently, but not enforced. So we've been a little bit more detailed in our specification as to what needs to be done and validate certain. We've also updated a few other provisions, such as contact information, and there will be a drainage plan, a dust control plan. In general, the conditions are, meet the, the petty requirements of conditional use and will reduce any public concerns or detriments while this pit is in abeyance and the Lucy pit is filled.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pease. Are there any other findings, Mr. Weddleton?
I'd add that we found that the general standards for continued conditional use approval, AMC twenty-one point five oh point oh two oh, were met, as well as the standards for natural resource extraction, AMC twenty-one point five oh point oh seven oh.
Okay, anything further? I will just briefly state, I think that it is appropriate to put the, this activity into abeyance and give top priority to getting that Lucy pit filled as, again, I stated, it is a public nuisance and it's beyond time to get that taken care of, as commitments have been made to the community for many years about that site. Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, that is approved. Would you folks like your booklets back for any reason? You spent a lot of money getting these printed and put together. Do folks need to take a short break or shall we move ahead with our next case? Okay, five minutes. I will call the meeting back to order. The next case on our agenda is two thousand ten dash zero zero five. The petitioner is the municipality of Anchorage and the request is for an ordinance of the Anchorage Municipal Assembly amending Anchorage Code Section twenty-one forty, one thirty to allow large domestic animal facilities on certain large lots in the RO district as permitted accessory uses and structures and as a conditional use comparable to the R six suburban residential district. Could we have the staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we begin, some of the department report agenda items only had the department's copy of the AO in it. So before the meeting started, I placed at each of your chairs a new G three, which is the assembly version of the AO. It's just so that you would have the full history. The assembly version left out a couple of references to accessory uses and conditional uses. The department version is essentially the same ordinance as the assembly, but with those other areas added in and on the, on the... And on the, on the draft, you can see the areas we added in because they're in bold and underlined, whereas the assembly changes are just in normal type and underlined. So, that's why you got an extra copy at your desk, because some of the original packages were missing, the assemblies version. For anyone who's involved in the original large animal ordinance, this might look a little bit intimidating, but it's really not much more than a housekeeping item. The intent was always to limit the large animal facilities to the large lots, and that generally means suburban as on the hillside or rural areas as in the case of Chugiak, anything north of Eagle River, basically. It was pointed out by one property owner who is, I believe she's in Chugiak, she's up off of Voyles, has two and a half acres of RO property, and her property had a horse operation on it at one time, and she wanted to know how she could get it started up again, and because it was zoned RO, she could not. So, we discussed with a couple of assembly members and several of the departments how we should best treat this, and the conclusion was that there was no intent to exclude RO from the original large animal ordinance, so why don't we just change the ordinance now, open it back up, and add RO in to the large animal ordinance, with the understanding that RO is a little different than many properties because of the mix of residential and office uses it allows. So, what we've proposed is that whereas a large domestic animal facility in the other zoning districts can be on property as small as 40,000 square feet in size, if it's an RO zoning, we're going to double that and require that the property be at least 80,000 square feet in size. Other than that, the properties, the RO properties will be treated the same as any of the other residential zones in regards to the large animal facility. They'll have the same criteria, the same thresholds, the same review procedures, and so on. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Isham.
Mr. Weddleton, refresh my memory, on 40,000 square feet, how many animals were they allowed to have, four or eight?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Isham, the other districts, four. The rule of thumb is one animal per 10,000, but you had to start at 40,000.
Okay. So, in the RO, we're just saying it's got to be minimum 80,000, and you can have one per 10.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Weddleton.
You know, it seems like if you have a lot that's zoned RO, you're looking for some intensity of use that's quite a bit more than an 80,000 square foot horse property. So, when we allow this, it's, it seems like we're, I mean, why would it be, why would a lot be zoned RO in the first place and then we'd allow it to be used more like a R6?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Weddleton, I, I think I see what you're saying. By doing this, we're really diluting what the original intent of R was for the more intense residential and office uses. Maybe, I, I think you could make the argument either way. One of the reasons we did discuss for including the RO is veterinary clinics are allowed in RO, but they would have to be in a fully-contained building in the RO district, and that's not realistic where it would come to a veterinarian who wants to either have or work at or goes to visit for providing veterinary services a large animal facility that's in the RO district. So, I don't, does that answer your question?
Well, it leads that way a little bit. And so then it also, why would it, why 80,000 not 40,000? If 40,000 works fine on the hillside, why not here?
It's, Madam Chair, Commissioner Weddleton, it's with the understanding that the RO does allow for that mix of uses, the more intense residential and office that you just described, and, and also with the recognition that surrounding the RO property that might be 80,000 square feet, you're going to have many, many lots which are much smaller in size because of their zoning, whereas on those large lot residential districts, R5, 6, 7, 8, and so forth, you're more likely to find a large lot in the company of other large lots, so they're going to be naturally buffered in that sense. But here, we're talking about a large RO that's surrounded either by small RO or small residential or even small commercial lots, so we just wanted that, that extra degree of separation between the uses.
All right, thank you.
Ms. O'Shamer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Mr. Barrett, I, I cannot think of a single reason why the RO zone should be diluted to this capacity. I am familiar, because I am part of an LLC in downtown Eagle River that owns 10.25 acres of RO, and I guess I should be delighted to know that I can now put horses there. It seems to me the intent of the RO district is a buffer between commercial and residential because it does allow for a mixed use and density, but nowhere can I think in Anchorage or Eagle River where it would be appropriate for an RO parcel of even 40,000 or 80,000 square feet to have horses. So, is this, is this, and then I saw the comment by Mr. Ellis that this is for the purposes of one particular piece of property, and if this is the case, why can't we hear, why can't that person, that owner come forward and we can deal with it on an individual basis? Why do we have to have, change the large animal ordinance to RO just to accommodate one particular individual? Unless you can point out other areas where this might be appropriate.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Shamer, it is a little bit unique. I don't recall the exact number when I went through this with the IT department. I think we identified six or eight pieces of RO property from Eagle River North where they currently exist as RO and are at least 80,000 square feet in size. So, we were looking to see what the impact to the rest of the muni would be. Now, as to one individual being involved with this, one individual did get it started, and one of the remedies that was discussed with that individual was rezone her property. She is adjacent to other appropriate zoning districts such as R7 that would currently allow her then to apply for a large animal facility. And I'm, I'm sorry to say that I was out of town when the final decision was made, and when I returned, I was somewhat surprised to see that we were going with this method as opposed to encouraging this particular person to come before you with a rezone instead. I wasn't party to those discussions. I don't know how that decision was made. I'm afraid I can't tell you more.
I appreciate your candor, Mr. Barrett. Your comments reaffirm my decision I will not be supporting this.
Well, we don't have, we haven't even had our hearing yet.
Ah, Ms. O'Shamer.
Okay. Ms. Pease.
Mr. Barrett, could you explain or clarify for me whether the 80,000 square foot lot requirement would in fact require any buffer? Because I think I remember that you can put your ring, your riding ring or your other facility right up to the lot line. You don't have to, it's not a structure, so you don't have to set back your bare muddy, dusty ring. So, how would 80,000 square foot provide, 80,000 square foot minimum lot size provide any buffer for adjoining commercial and residential, high-intensity residential use?
Okay, Madam Chair, Commissioner Pease, no, you cannot put your riding ring right up to the property line. The, the large animal ordinance allows the operator of the large animal facility two or three choices in how they want to deal with their buffer, whether they want a setback from the property line, from residential uses, or if they're willing to put in certain types of landscaping, buffer landscaping and so forth, between their property line and the animal use to buffer the adjacent neighborhood. So, that, that was the reason for the 80,000, to make sure we had enough room on those lots to provide plenty of setback for the neighbors.
But if you just said you're four or fewer, which is by right use, then can you not put your four hogs or cattle up to the property line?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pease, no. If you elect just to go with your by right and not go through the conditional use process, you are stuck with the setback requirements that apply to all animals except dogs in zoning districts. That's essentially the yard setback. So, for, in, in R6, you'd have a 25-foot setback on the side.
But in RO, it's five foot or something, I didn't have my code with me, so Mr. Frederick's looking for it. My concern is that because it's RO, there aren't substantial side and rear lot setbacks, and you could put your paddock or your hog pen right up at the buffer even though it's 80,000 square foot lot.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pease, if, if you elect not to do the large animal facility by simply having four or fewer animals, yes, you can do that now. That's allowed under the zoning code. You just have to meet the normal setback. Although in RO, that's a good question because it hadn't occurred to me that somebody might just want to come forward and say, isn't this just as bad? But under RO, if I can find it real quickly.
Okay, I have a question for Mr. Barrett. Just, are you, do you want to research or should I?
Go ahead, I think I can read unless, and I'll try.
Okay. All right, you're just looking at the two documents here. We have the one that is the, you handed out today, and then I guess that's the assemblies version, and then, so what you would look for us to consider today is actually the one with the additional bold text.
Correct. The one that has the, the cover sheet on it that says it's the municipal version, I'm sorry, the, is the planning department version.
Okay. And that's G5 on January 4?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have, don't see anyone else in the queue. So, at this time, I will open the public hearing, and Ms. Holmes.
Diane Holmes, I didn't come for this tonight, but luckily, I have in front of me something to show you. I'm well aware of the situation with the prior language change with the large domestic animal ordinance, but does Eagle River have their own planning and Title 21? Why do we have to have a code here that affects all of Anchorage if we're only basically talking about where we're up there?
They don't have their, their own section of Title 21 yet.
But they will.
Someday.
Okay. Well, and there's another issue here, and I didn't read this super carefully. I don't know whether this is for primary or accessory, accessory use, but I can tell you that no matter whether it is, screening is going to be a problem because it is in the current code. And there's three options that were just mentioned for buffering. If you leave them in slight a slope, they don't work. Trust me, they do not work. For drainage, and you have always the smell. And if you have a higher density area than this RO, which just seems like this is what the padding is, you will always have a problem with smell and drainage. But back to the screening issue, I have a picture that I'm going to pass around, just these two here, it was made for something else, but it shows accessory use in southeast Anchorage, and because I believe it's a structure, there is no requirement for, for any buffering. This house you will see behind there severely impacted, this is about 30 feet high, and I'll retell you from the beginning about that, I'm sure you will. But there is no buffering, and also you need to consider, I think there's a flaw in this, in current code about buffering, buffering may have to come within easements, but that's not right because those things can be destroyed if they're utilities, you know, aided and determined. And, but just discuss this, like I said, not on top of this as much as the next, hopefully the next one that you have coming up on the agenda, but let me pass this around, okay?
While that's circulating around, is there anyone else that would like to testify on this matter? Oh, did you have questions for Ms. Holmes, Ms. Pease?
No, I did not.
Okay. Mr. Weddleton, did you have questions for Ms. Holmes?
I did. So, is your recommendation that we not support this change to the RO or that we add buffering?
Both, because we don't know what the next body's going to do. So, if you, if you're against it, but then provisionally, I would say, head your bet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this matter? If so, please come forward. Anyone else at all? Hearing and seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Ms. Pease, do you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to say that Mr. Frederick loaned me his copy of the code, and it looks, it was under 2140, 130G, which is the minimum yard requirements for the RO. The side yards are zero feet or five feet if buildings aren't intended to abate, so you could put your paddock or your hog pen very close to the lot line.
Okay. Motion would be in order, and we need to make a positive motion. Mr. Isham?
Madam Chair, move for approval of case, let's see what case this is, case 2010-005, and that's Anchorage AO number 2009130, and it's the S version, which we received copies of, it's a little longer version.
Okay, and that's been seconded by Ms. Pease. Would you care to speak to your motion?
Basically, the S version also not only includes the RO district, but it also includes accessory buildings in the R11 district. It's under Section 3, although everything else applies to the RO district. Just for information, I will not be supporting this. I, I believe that it, that it applies to, it's almost an exception that we're writing this AO for, and I would suggest that the property owners that want to do this kind of stuff should come to us and ask for variance of some sort, and then we can deal with it on an individual basis and apply whatever controls we think is appropriate. I think Ms. Pease has discussed and brought out the fact that these large animals can go right up to the lot line or at least within five feet of the lot line, and I don't think that's kind of what you would anticipate in an area that is designed for medium-low-intensity dwellings and office spaces and things of that nature, even though if you look at the permitted uses, it does include veterinary. it does include veterinary clinics, which may be interested in something like that. However, the veterinary clinics, it says very specifically that they'll all be conducted within a completely enclosed building. So obviously, they allow that type of, you know, animal husbandry, so to speak, on the site, but they want it inside an enclosed building. So I will not be supporting this.
Mr. Weddleton?
I won't be supporting it either. And largely, it seems away from the intent of the R O district and a goal of using land at the greatest intensity that is allowed by code.
Okay. Are there any further comments? Ms. Pease?
Yes, we have a policy, overarching policies in the comp plan of infill and redevelopment. And the R O district is an area that's intended for higher intensity uses than large paddocks and riding rings and that sort of thing. So if we're going to achieve our vibrant urban and suburban cores, we need to accept that this type of use should be in the more low-density areas. And then if this does go forward, there should be some serious consideration given to the weakness we've identified, or the potential nuisance we've identified, in that even for the, or for the smaller numbers of animals at least, you could build your paddocks, your enclosures up to the property line of adjoining office properties and residential properties. And the odors, dust, and so forth, drainage, that close to the lot line can be a real nuisance.
Any further comments? I will just add, I will not be supporting the motion either. Even though staff mentioned that this may only, as they understand it, affect a very small number of currently zoned R O parcels in the municipality at this time, there is absolutely nothing to prevent people from assembling our lots during replat and ending up with a much larger parcel of R O. And all of a sudden, you have a fairly good-sized arena and commercial operation in the midst of other business and our residential developments, just totally misplaced within the community. And I think, as I read the purpose statement in both the current Title 21 section of the code, as it's currently enacted, and the proposed change at Title 21, there's absolutely no way that this can be justified, this change. So it's very inappropriate, and it's almost akin to like a spot zoning. So I will not be supporting it. Since there is objection, Madam Secretary, we need to use our voting machines. That motion fails unanimously. So our recommendation will go forward to the Assembly. The next item, Ms. Holmes, do you wish this submitted to the record, or you may have it back? Oh, it never made it down to the other end of the table, sorry, guys. Can you collect it from Mr. Morrison down here? My apologies. The next item on our agenda is our last case. It is case number G4, the municipality of Anchorage Planning Department, Title 21, Rewrite Follow-Up Sections Number 1. Could we have the staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just when you thought you were done with Title 21, there's more. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed and made recommendations on all of the chapters of the Title 21 rewrite that basically the planning department has been working on. And the exception, of course, is the Chapter 10, which is the 2D Echigo River chapter that was mentioned earlier. The Assembly is finishing, is about halfway through Chapter 7, and they still have Chapter 14 to work on, and then they will be done. You may recall that as various parts of the chapters have been reviewed, that there may, that there were sections that were controversial. And as I say this, I'm not sure that staff proposed reserving any sections in front of this body, but as chapters did get to the Assembly, the Assembly, due to, often to either a question that was not able to be resolved immediately, or something that was controversial, they pulled a section out and replaced it with a reserved category to be filled in at a later date. So those are pieces of Title 21 that needed to be filled in. There have also been some issues that have, because the chapters have been adopted, you know, one at a time, sometimes a change that was made to a later chapter affects something that's happened in an earlier chapter. And sometimes staff has found problems, or been kind of notified of problems from the public on certain issues that we hadn't caught earlier. So due to all those reasons, there are what we call follow-up issues that need to be addressed. These range from the significant issues that we're bringing before you to small things like fixing cross-references, you know, rewording a sentence to make it make more sense. Those small things, we are not bringing before this body, but we will provide you with a list of those minor changes. So these larger issues that we're bringing to the Planning and Zoning Commission are coming in two batches, what we call follow-up provisions number one and follow-up provisions number two. We're looking at follow-up provisions number one tonight. I also have the packet for number two to pass out to you this evening, and that is scheduled for your consideration on February 8. There are 10 items in tonight's packet. I'm not going to walk through them, because I assume that you'll bring up the ones you want to talk about, and there's no point in my going through the ones that you don't want to talk about. There are 10 items in this, and there are approximately another 10 items in Packet 2, again, which I will pass out in a minute. We did receive some comments, and we do have a few amendments to propose based on those comments, and we have those to pass out to you. It's just one page.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there questions of staff? I don't see anybody in my queue, yet. Are these the proposed changes you're passing out? Okay. Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair. With regard to, and I haven't had a chance to look at the new changes that just were put in front of me, but with regard to item number 6 on page 15, I'm wondering about the inclusion of amusement establishments in the P District. Couldn't that include something pretty, with a pretty large footprint and a pretty permanent presence, such as, say, a Century Theater Multiplex? And the reason I raise this is, in the description here, some of the fitness and recreational type uses that have been in the warehouse buildings in the I District, like a dance studio, or gymnastics place, seem to have, you know, a not really permanent impact. They occupy the interior of a warehouse space, and it can be reconfigured. But an amusement establishment, and I haven't looked at the definition of amusement establishment, but I wondered whether that could include something such as, as I stated, a very large, permanent type of project that would take away for a long time from the industrial redevelopment possibility?
Yes, through the chair. We don't believe that in general amusement establishment would present necessarily a more permanent type of facility than, for example, the instructional services or the, excuse me, the fitness and recreational facility, sports center uses, or the major entertainment, the major entertainment facility that's mentioned in the rationale near the bottom of page 15, that, for example, amusement establishment could include a paintball or something, some use like that, which could use warehouse space, just the same that, for example, establishments like Arctic Gymnastics may, which are fitness and recreational uses, use warehouse space. On each side of the fence, whether it's a fitness and recreational facility, or whether it's an amusement establishment, there is the possibility that you could have a more permanent use. You could have something akin to a bowling alley for the amusement establishment side. And on the fitness and recreational facility, you could, you know, have an Alaska Club. But for the most part, we're thinking these uses, they do make use of warehouse space. There's a climbing gym, for example, I'm aware of. And they provide a market, a market for industrial buildings, use of those buildings, while not threatening the conversion of the industrial area into a retail center. An amusement establishment does not include cineplexes or movie theaters. That is a separate use type.
If I could follow up on that, though, what is there to stop a complex, or deter a complex, such as the O'Malley Center-type complex, from growing in an industrial area, in which there's the ice rink, I think two big ice rinks, the Tesoro, and I don't know what they're called, and then the Alaska Club, and altogether, they take up, I don't know, five or more acres, and it's not industrial?
Yes, through the chair. It's always a possibility. What we have proposed is that these would be permitted only through the conditional use process. And through that process, the intent would be that the proposed uses would need to be demonstrated to not be in conflict with the intent of the district, in conflict with possibly surrounding industrial uses. So the approach recommended is to use the conditional use process rather than permitting these outright.
And one more question. Is there any, was there any discussion of, under conditional use, of conditional use standards that would ensure that these fitness and amusement-type places are small-scale and don't become a large complex, like the Dome, that take out five or 10 or 20 acres of industrial land?
Well, and I'm not, I'm not sure I recall whether it was this issue or not, there was discussion of preparing a, so to speak, district-specific conditional use standards. And for the life of me, I don't remember whether it was this issue or not, maybe a different one. We looked at that, and for example, looked at conditional use approval criteria that, for example, the traffic impacts would not conflict with the needs of industrial-related circulation. Looking back on the generally applicable conditional use criteria, we elected to simply fall back on that general criteria, believing that it could provide, the approval criteria under the generally applicable conditional use process would provide opportunities to address conflicts with the intent of the industrial district.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions of staff? I have one, oh, I'm sorry. Are you back in the queue, Ms. Pease?
Yeah, I had a question on a different.
Well, I, if you will indulge me, I have one on this same proposed amendment about the amusement establishments in these fitness and recreational sports centers. There have been instances where young people will get together in warehouses for these activities called raves. And I don't think they rent them on a long-term basis. They just rent them for an evening or two. But would this, would these definitions allow those kind of activities?
I don't know if Miss Conley will be able to add to this in answer, but there is an establishment, is an allowed use type. It would include arcades, bowling alleys, billiard parlors, bingo parlors, laser tag parlors, water parks, indoor shooting ranges. What you might be referring to might be...
Madam Chair, I believe that would be considered a nightclub, specifically an unlicensed nightclub, a teen nightclub.
Even though no alcohol would be served?
Yeah, that's, that's an unlicensed nightclub. A licensed nightclub has alcohol, and an unlicensed one doesn't.
Although I think these things just show up sometimes. Thank you. Ms. Pease?
Yes, Madam Chair, I had questions on two more of these items. With regard to issue number 8 on page 19, this has to do with the approval processes for master plans for parks and for development projects for parks. And I wondered how staff came up with the cutoffs, or the thresholds of 50 acres delineating what kind of approval you need for a master plan, and 500,000 delineating what kind of approval you need for a project?
Through the chair, Commissioner Pease, I'm not going to have a very good answer for you. I think $500,000 is a, I think that's a threshold that's been used elsewhere, but I'm not sure exactly where. These came up during the, you may recall, it's either last year or the year before, there was an ordinance that transferred public facility site plan review from the Planning and Zoning Commission to the Urban Design Commission. And we worked a lot on the section on the definition of a park and what would happen to parks. And the 50 acres came out of those discussions, not discussions with you guys, but discussions among the planning department and the Parks and Rec Department and the Parks and Recreation Commission. I apologize, I didn't bring my parks plan with me tonight, but I think they looked at the various natural resource use areas and kind of said, well, we would expect, you know, this one to fall in, but not this one, and kind of looked at the various sizes of those particular facilities, and came up with 50 acres as a reasonable threshold. I would have to get back to you on which specific ones, I would have to look back on my notes. I'm not 100% sure where the $500,000 comes from. I mean, that's a number that seems familiar to me, but it, it might just have been that somebody put it out there, and everyone said, yeah, that's, you know, we can put in a small playground for that amount of money, and that's okay. So I'm sorry, I don't have a good answer.
Yes, to follow up on that, it occurred to me that there's certain natural resource areas, and I would like to see which ones are over 50 and under 50. But if it's, you know, I don't know how big Baxter Bag is, for example, but there's an area that I believe is quite beloved by their surrounding... is quite beloved by their surrounding community, and the community, there's some people in the community trying to raise money for development plans there, and I would certainly think that some kind of public process would be good for an area, beneficial for the public and the area. And likewise, with the $500,000, if, I think what I would like to see is a review process where the use is going to change significantly, either the type of use or the intensity of use. If you can put in a 20 or 30 space parking lot for half a million dollars in a park that's never had parking before, and you change it therefore from a walk-to park to a park that now attracts group uses, for example, then I think a more of a public process is warranted. And I guess one more point on this is that I'm wondering if our master plan should have some kind of public input, even the smaller ones, right now, 2BIB says that master plans for parks, 50 acres or fewer should be approved administratively by the director, and I'm thinking maybe we should consider only adding something like only after a public hearing before the Parks and Rec Commission, based on the recent experiences we've had where the director of the administration has gotten sort of out ahead on something like the Russian Jack Golf Course, that one springs to mind, but people can test about their parks, and some kind of public review, at least at the master plan stage, I think is really important.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Pease, we didn't codify any Parks and Rec Commission requirements, the Parks and Rec Commission is not a land use board or commission that's supported by the Planning Department, so the Parks and Recreation Department staff and the planning staff agreed that it would be up to Parks and Recreation which projects go to the Parks and Rec Commission, so it's certainly possible that a public hearing before the Parks and Recreation Commission would happen for all master plans, but I can't guarantee that, so that was just informational.
Okay. I don't see any further questions in the queue, so I'm going to open the public hearing and invite the public to come forward.
Sorry, I don't have these written up for you because I learned about this yesterday. I have two comments, one on page 13 and another on page 19 of 25, about accessory, more uses in PLI and to follow through with what Ms. Pease said. The first one, you know, I've always believed that PLI was a catch-all category to be held and then zoned for future use before development occurred. To me, the word public means things like, public facilities like fire stations and parks. And we have 2020 goals for infillment and development that was mentioned earlier, because it makes good planning and economical sense that we build from core areas outward. While this PLI category has really been watered down in the last few years to where it's almost meaningless, hotels now with educational facilities, and apparently, I mean, it's always been that you can have nonprofit hospitals in PLI, and I don't know if that means you can have for-profit hospitals, though. But where does this leave us? Good land use planning, to me, it should be zoned, the land should be zoned to be determined that it's suitable for specific uses in adjacent areas. We have a lot of PLI scattered around town, sometimes far from our developed infrastructure, and so that would end up allowing more uses rather than requiring a new zone to, you know, ensure compatibility and economical development, appears contrary to the goals of 2020 and land use planning in general. Should assisted living and nursing facilities be allowed, say, problems, hospitals, lands, PLI land, well, probably so, because they're, it's already developed, and it's a nonprofit religious organization. But what about for-profit assisted living facilities? That's commercial, maybe it's all commercial, I don't know. But what if the land was amidst industrial lands or far removed from reasonable emergency response times? I agree with the tightening up of these proposed PLI land uses, although I'd like to see more restrictions before allowing assisted living and nursing facilities, conditions that they be within reasonable response time and close to the needed services, and that the utilities and road infrastructure be adequate to handle this use, and that these facilities would fit within zoned, adjacent zoned areas.
Can you sum up for us, Ms. Holmes?
Well, I've summed up that, and obviously, I don't have time to talk about the parks and Town Square.
There'll be some questions, I'm sure.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, Ms. Holmes, I wondered if you had any comments, given your involvement over the years in parks development on, on the topic of the parks approvals?
Page, thank you, page 19 of the 25, I know this has gone, undergone some changes that were going to be handled by UDC and whatnot, but I have a lot of heartburn with the language that they allow a project of $500,000 or less, or a master plan of 50 acres or less to be done administratively, to be reviewed administratively. If this were law two years ago, Town Square would not have had the benefit of the public process that it did have, and I could go on about that, but I won't. This body, the eyes that included a provision in the downtown business plan that Town Square, which is a body acre or less, would always come before this body. Even in a small park like that, or even larger parks, trust me, a couple of thousand dollars can radically change the original purpose of a park, so I would ask that you have clarifying language that some plans, such as the downtown business plan, may supersede this, this section. People need to be reminded to check these subplans over time, because we're not going to be here forever, or specifically mention Town Square has, as a significant park, has some different review, because otherwise, it would never come up for public process, and I think that Ms. Pease is very right, we need to ensure a public process for things that are less than 50 acres and less than $50,000. So I hope that she will write some language in it, and I'm sorry that I did not get this ahead, and I have to turn to her to do it for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Are there further questions for Ms. Holmes? Thank you for coming out tonight once again. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this matter, anyone at all? Hearing and seeing no one, the hearing is closed. Commissioners, Ms. Pease?
I have a couple of follow-up questions for staff, first in response to Ms. Holmes' comments. On page 13, business and professional uses are going to be limited so that they're of a charitable or quasi-public organization. Why, was there any consideration to having assisted living facilities or nursing facilities have the same focus, so that they're charitable or quasi-public in nature?
Through the Chair, no, we did not consider whether or not the facility would be for-profit or not for-profit. I'm concerned that the offices is potentially far greater, it's a far more common land use, and does have the potential to, to basically, for lack of a better word, invade the PLI district in a much, a much larger scale. The assisted living facility, we are depending on the conditional use process and the approval criteria in a generally applicable conditional use review process do address some of the concerns that were raised regarding adequate roads and utilities, and whether the assisted living facility would fit in with its surroundings, and so, for some of these uses, throughout the use, the table of allowed uses, the conditional use process does have a set of ten approval criteria that get to these kinds of issues, and they're not necessarily district or use specific, but they do provide a fallback.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make a comment about for-profit and nonprofit, I think that, I've been told many times that we can't take into consideration the profitability of a project, and I would say, in nonprofits and for-profits, those lines are getting more and more blurred, you might have a subsidized structure, but a for-profit operator as far as assisted living or a nursing facility is concerned, so I don't suggest that, or recommend that we differentiate for-profit or nonprofit entities, because I think it's getting very difficult to tell the difference these days.
That's correct, you can have a nonprofit owner and a profit operator, that's very common. Okay, Mr. Eishem?
Yes, for staff, in regards to the use regulation for the PLI, typically, an assisted living facility would have a restaurant, some of the higher-level ones have bars, my ones, my folks were in, had a bar, so I'm just wondering if there's any problem with the fact that you no longer permit restaurants and bars, yet you do permit assisted living facilities?
Through the Chair, Mr. Eishem, those would be considered accessory to the assisted living facility, and so they would be okay.
And if they had a bar, they'd have to have a liquor license from the ABC Board, and it'd have to go through that drill as well. Ms. Pease, are you back in the queue?
I am, new topic. Question for staff on item nine, which is landfill and recycling drop-off. Two questions here, one is the recycling drop-off hours, were changed or liberalized so that it could start at 6:00 AM instead of 7:00 AM, and since this is, as I understand, seven days a week, I'm just wondering whether that isn't rather intrusive if it's in a residential or near, with the residential area to have pickup at 6:00 AM on Saturdays and Sundays, I mean, with gravel hall and that sort of thing, we give them a break on Sunday, and I think it's usually 7:00 AM, I can't remember, but it's that same kind of, a recycling center could have multiple trucks coming and queuing up, and, you know, then all the crashing and banging, and so, I was looking for something a little more protective of residences with an airshot.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Pease, we would have no objection to an amendment that limited the pickups to weekdays.
I think that'd be a big help. And one more question on this one, these recycling drop-off centers, or sorry, this transfer facility, rather, is limited, it can't be within 500 feet of any academic school, hospital, or place of religious assembly or residential, and in looking at those uses, it seemed to me that school residents have some outdoor activity which could be impacted, hospitals, sort of a, I guess, you know, a quiet zone or a zone, anyway, I'm not sure why the religious assembly is, needs that kind of a buffer, particularly because you can find religious assemblies in a residential zoning district if they're looking for that quiet setting, but you sometimes see them in commercial storefronts, in the B3 and other, or even, you know, in family, commercial or industrial-looking areas, and it seems that you would exclude a lot of potential sites. So I guess what I'm asking is, would you consider removing religious assembly, knowing that religious assemblies that are in residential zoning districts are still going to have a good setback, but the storefront, commercial area ones wouldn't?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Pease, we tried to create this buffer zone for things that have generally been considered sensitive uses, and I think religious assembly has always been kind of lumped into that list of sensitive uses. I guess I wouldn't have a lot of heartburn with removing it, considering that those that are in residential districts would be protected.
Well, maybe I should hit a motion and move that we go in a committee of a whole so we can go through these one at a time.
Feel free.
That's my motion.
And Mr. Eishem seconded it. Was there any objection to going into the committee as a whole? Hearing none?
So now I have to lead the thing?
Yes, now you're in charge, some people may not have anything with any, some of these issues, and so don't feel compelled to create something if there are no issues.
Okay, so, so we begin discussing number one, any?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's only 10.
Well, we're just, we're going to go, just go through. Move on through, Mr. Weddleton.
Okay, looking at number one, I had one comment from earlier on, does anyone have comments on this one? Okay, my only comment on that one, and Ms. McConnell said it was acceptable, is just that they add a definition of campus-style site plan to chapter 14.
Excuse me, Mr. Weddleton, I think that's in issue two.
That two? Oh, look, we're really blowing through here then.
Okay, so it sounds like there's no objection to number one, is that correct? So one is okay, number two?
Okay, number two, Business Industrial Park. We have three amendments from staff.
And does anyone have any objections to that?
Does anyone have any objections?
Doesn't, doesn't sound like it. Now, what were you saying about a definition you had proposed?
Is this where it was?
Was that the one?
No, I think actually mine was in number one, that's what I had, but it's fine, it's really separate from what's in front of us.
All right.
It's a request for a definition.
Okay. Okay, so two is okay. Moving on to number three.
Any objections to number three?
I don't see any on the right side or the left.
Okay, so that's accepted?
Number four. Number four.
Number four. Any objections to number four? And we have an amendment from staff on that?
Well, we had, uh, yeah, for consideration, as we did on number two.
Okay.
New C.
A new subsection V, little Roman, Roman X, two, and...
This will replace it?
Right.
Or additional wording?
Yes, additional wording added in. Any objection?
My, uh, I had a comment on that. That looks fine to me, and I'd recommend that 5,000 square foot, I believe, but, uh, staff should feel free to, um, this moves forward to see if that is really a sensible size. I just winged it. Kind of like that 500,000 cutoff that was...
Okay.
Okay, issue number five.
So there's no objection on four?
Well, I guess we should say, uh, do we accept, uh, staff's amendment?
Do we accept staff's change? Is there any objection to that change?
No objection.
I don't hear any. Okay, number five.
Number five. Any objections to that?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to speak, uh, for the record, on my concerns echoing what we heard in testimony from Ms. Holmes tonight, um, that the assisted living facility and the nursing facility, um, seem more, um, they seem to be a little bit of a different species from what we're approving with the business and professional offices, which are to be charitable or, or quiet-type, public, non-commercial nature. I guess the safeguard here would be in calling them conditional uses, and there would need to be special attention to whether they fit in with the other public, um, uses in the, in the neighboring parts of the, that PLI area where they're proposed.
Is there any objection noting, uh, Ms. Pease's comments? Okay, hearing none. All right, Nancy.
Uh, number six.
This deals with use regulations. Ms. Pease?
Yes, I, I do have some concerns with, um, the possibility of large-scale centers of fitness, recreation, and amusement taking advantage of, um, industrial land, perhaps because it's, it's cheaper, um, when the intent of our plan, comprehensive plan, is to preserve an industrial base of basic industry because it's an economic engine. Um, and so I'm wondering if staff might consider some, an additional use-specific standard or two to emphasize that, um, perhaps the scale of these types of uses should be limited, so that they don't take a large potential bite out of the limited industrial land base. Either the scale or the, I guess, I don't know how to word it, but the, basically the permanence. So if use is large, but it's inside warehouse-type buildings, it is easily convertible back to industrial uses. It seems to me that fits, but if it's, um, swimming pool complex and that sort of thing, it's going to remain as a non-industrial use and perhaps attract other non-industrial uses. So I guess I'd, I'd like to consider asking staff about some use-specific standards.
Mr. Morrison.
I think I understand where, um, Ms. Pease is going with that, but being an owner of several different commercial properties and trying to work within that, um, sometimes the survival of that commercial property makes a difference on getting something in there that keeps you going until it can be used later. And in business itself, it will clean itself out, and it will go to the best user, um, you know, throughout the process. So I would not support putting more limitations on it, because if you do, you could be hampering the ability of an investor to be able to grow with that property and develop it into the industrial property that we really would like to have it become. And, and I have some of my own properties that's, that's happened with, so I, I would not suggest you try to put any more restrictions on it in the process of trying to do that.
It also seems, but I, are you suggesting, Ms. Pease, though, that we wouldn't want to see a warehouse replaced by a swimming pool? Or are you just saying, uh, it's fine to use that warehouse for paintball without, you know, destroying its, its potential use as a warehouse for when we have more requirements for warehouses, and that then gets more money, so you throw the paintballers out? And is, is that what you're suggesting, or, or what?
Yeah, that, you, you captured my intent in the second statement. It seems to me that the sort of transient type of recreational or amusement uses that can be redeveloped as industrial uses fit in fine, but if you're putting in a multiplex theater or swimming pool, something that requires millions of dollars of investment in bricks and mortar, the chances of reconfiguring that back to an industrial use might be limited, and the sort of type of use that attracts might inhibit, you know, a smelter or something going up next door.
Well, I guess really, in, in many cases, it's, it's whether it's raw land that you're developing, or if you're just reutilizing something that's already existing, you know? And I don't know how to word that. Is, Mr. Morrison, is that kind of what you're talking about? In other words, you don't want to be restricted on, on leasing out a building to somebody else for, for something that may not be selling automobiles, as an example?
Mr. Sasham, I, I appreciate your question on that. I think the difficulty comes into, that I see is, we already have a process to review each of these projects that come forward. If we already have the process to review each of these projects when they're going to, when they're going to come in and use anything, if you're talking about developing a building on raw land, we have the opportunity to make our recommendations at that time. It's already fairly restrictive, and I, I think that those industrial uses will work themselves out. And the, the kind of areas and the kind of things you might be talking about, um, if it's going to be a warehouse that gets turned into, and I'll give you an example. I was in Florida visiting my brother, and there was a warehouse that had turned into a dance studio. You wouldn't think of a warehouse as a dance studio, but basically it was an instructional dance studio. And that worked for about six or seven years, but that was a low income for that warehouse section, and eventually what happened is it backfilled with something that was more intended for that particular area. But it allowed the, the user of the building to keep it alive long enough so that he could keep up with the rent payments or his mortgage payments to keep it alive. If you begin to put these kind of restrictions on it, then what happens is, is you might find yourself, as an investor, as a person that owns a building, in a position where, gee, I can't bring this group in. And so I just, I, I think that if you're talking about building a building, you're talking about redeveloping something, we have a provision to review those as we go. But don't make it any harder in order for the business people to try to keep it alive.
Ms. Oshimura.
Um, I concur with Mr. Morrison's, uh, position. Um, I think, I can think of several small businesses that are situated in warehouse storefronts, so to speak, um, and typically those warehouse rates are a lot less expensive than what would normally be in a, in a strip mall, for example. And I think we need to, um, keep those small businesses, um, alive and well. You know, I, I think this I-1 district is, is a very difficult zone, really, um, because I think it, um, at some point in time, we will have, um, more industrial property, but I'm not sure it's going to be along the C Street corridor, you know, or, um, in areas of town that we typically would like it to be. It's probably going to be redeveloped, um, in the railroad district and the Birchwood area, and, um, maybe even across the bridge, who knows? Um, so I think there needs to maintain some flexibility in this I-1 district.
Okay.
I would suggest that the fact that we are changing them from prohibited to C, which is conditional use, allows us to look at a person that wants to come in and put an amusement establishment and ask, have the neighbors make their comments, and if it's, rather than prohibiting it, if it's something that we can do to put some conditions on it that will make it happen, it seems to me that would benefit the business community rather than just flat prohibit it.
Yeah. The, the only concerns or hesitancies that I would have, because I do believe it's important to be able to keep businesses alive that are there, but when you talk about bringing in new businesses, uh, one of the things a conditional use process allows is to look at things like, first of all, the impact of traffic. Industrial districts don't generate the level of traffic that a commercial use will generate. So if you have an amusement facility or a recreational facility in there, it's going to generate more traffic. And also, some of the public safety concerns there might be with people just generally being in the area, particularly at nights. You know, with the conditional use, you can look at things like lighting and address some things, both for security for that business as well as for people in the area. But I don't have a problem, I guess, with this. So much of our industrial land is kind of in, going through transitions. I live right up against industrial property, and I see it changing. I, you know, changing the tenant turnover, and, uh, and I've lived next to that subdivision for 35 years, and it's still maturing. So I could have one of these establishments right next to me.
So, um, my question is, Mr. Morrison, do you have any objections to this amendment as it's stated, from prohibited to conditional, from permitted to conditional, from prohibited to conditional, and from prohibited to permitted?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Weddleton?
Well, just a question for staff. I was looking at the table for, um, with these allowed uses. It seems like some of these tables have footnotes on them, and I didn't see any on this one. And I just wondered if it would be fair to add a footnote, um, connected to these uses that would say something like, "Non-industrial uses should be of a nature that would not detract from the ability to use the property for industrial purposes at a later date." And just to highlight the intent that, uh, this is primarily an industrial area.
If the commission was to recommend such language, I would recommend it as a use-specific sta, or, I'm sorry, a district-specific standard in chapter four under the industrial district rather than a footnote.
Would that happen tonight, or do we look at that with the next batch of amendments we might see?
Probably the best thing to do would be to agree among yourselves to direct staff to develop some language, and then we could bring it back to you, um, at the next meeting.
People accept that?
Okay. Well, we need to figure out if we're going to accept what the amendments that staff's proposed.
Okay.
And then we can address that second part.
Okay.
Okay. Are we gonna, uh...
Fine with it.
Everybody's fine with it.
Okay.
Okay, and now, what would you like to...
Well, then I'd propose, um, that staff consider adding to, uh, use-specific standard in chapter four for, um, industrial areas, that non-industrial uses should be of a nature that would not detract from the ability to use the property for industrial purposes at a later date, or something similar, and bring that back to us. Is that acceptable, people?
Is there any...
Say that again?
Yeah.
Sure.
Non-industrial uses should be of a nature that would not detract from the ability to use the property for an industri, for industrial purposes at a later date.
So are you talking about TIs, tenant improvements? I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure I understand.
Okay. Um, you know, my goal is to kind of tie in what Nancy was saying, that you could do, you know, if you put in a pool, that would make it hard to convert it later to, you know, what we think of as an industrial use. I mean, most things, if it's a dance studio or something like that, you could very quickly, those people leave and use your warehouse for warehousing. But there's, it would just give people applying for these conditional uses fair warning that the main use of the industrial land is for industrial purposes, not amusement and so on.
I, I don't think that I can support that. I think that's far too restrictive. Where if we, you know, that's like putting a time limit on a conditional use. Um, and I, I think it ties the hands of the tenant and the owner of the property. I'm not willing to support that.
But we do put a time limit on conditional uses, though. It's pretty typical, so...
I'm not comfortable with that.
So do I make a motion?
Well, we're in the committee of the whole, so we wait till we come out of the committee of the whole, and then take it up separately.
Okay, but changes on six are accepted?
I think that's, the changes on six are accepted. So now we're on seven.
Okay, any comments on seven?
Lee, I want one at my house.
I don't want one at my house.
Okay. Going once, going twice, going three times?
Seven's accepted.
That's, looks like it. Miss, okay, number eight.
Number eight, and we have, uh, staff recommendations regarding number, issue eight as well.
Right. Madam Chair, on this one, um, I'd like the commission to consider asking staff to bring this back to us with some threshold based not on acreage nor on dollars, but a threshold, um, of significant change in use or change in intensity of use, um, and then perhaps another category that would require the public hearing by P&amp;Z, which would be sort of, um, community-focused parks. I mean, the Park Strip, for example, I don't know if that's 50 acres. That should definitely have a master plan public hearing in my mind. A trail system might be very cheap if it's done with volunteer labor, but if it's in a natural resource area, it's going to be possibly raise a lot of interest. So I'd like to see some different standards and some greater requirement for public review.
Madam Chair, can I clarify? The 50 acres is only applicable to natural resource use areas, which is a certain category of park, and it's things like Far North Bicentennial Park, um, I think, it's something that I can think of right now, but the 50 acres is not generally applicable across the board. So community-use parks, such as Town Square, Delaney Park Strip, those would, um, those are considered community-use areas and would definitely have a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. I just wanted to clarify.
So that 50 acres only applies to the, or, natural resource use area?
That's correct.
Maybe if you make that a little clearer.
Pretty clear once you're told.
Well, but resource use area of 50 acres or fewer or more, or something like that, where you don't put it in parentheses like it appears to hook up to the rest of the stuff.
Yeah, because then it's kind of almost like incidental to...
Okay.
Ms. Pease, will that take, make you happy?
Um, well, that helps, but I still think that, um, I would like to see a threshold of, of a greater degree of public involvement ensured if there's a change of use in a park or intensity of use in a park. And, and with regard to the natural resource...
And with regard to the natural resource area, I'm still not sure what, I would still like to see what's over 50 acres and what's under 50 acres. For example, Baxter Bag, Fish Creek Estuary, I think Fish Creek might be, I don't know if it's 40 or 60, but it's, you know, it's a treasure.
Okay, Ms. McConnell, you're in the queue. Did I just neglect to remove you?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, if the commission, anyone else in the commission has, would like to see a little more detail on this, then maybe they could take our concerns and bring this back when we get to Section Two of the held issues.
What would the group like to do, Mr. Weddleton?
So we'll hold this one and then request more information from staff and get it next round without work.
In round two. Is there a concurrence here, ladies and gentlemen? Okay. Do you have a sense, Ms. McConnell, of where we're going or do you need more guidance?
I believe I have a sense.
Okay. Number nine, Mr. Weddleton?
Number nine, landfills and recycling drop-offs, any issues here?
I just have some administrative corrections. Under six B, I, first line, you got the words "at least" in there twice, setback, "at least," "at least."
What line, what section is that?
Six B, little I.
Okay.
First line, just repeated "at least" twice. And on six B, little I twice, middle line, you should put "in such a manner that the runoff."
Really nit-nice stuff.
Your I's are too sharp.
Prove I read it.
You're just a weasel worm. Okay, anything else on item nine, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Pease?
Yes, Madam Chair. On page 22, small r on the number four. And then the permissible hours of collection and pickup, so that it's between, well, it says "when may not occur," so it's not to occur between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM on weekdays and not at all on weekends and staff can fix the language.
Madam Chair?
What?
May I request that there be some allowed pickup on weekends? Often, weekends are a popular time for people to take their recycling to a drop-off and if the drop-off becomes, you know, overfilled on the weekend, it might need to be picked up. But so perhaps we could have the hours be more like 10 to 6.
Okay. That's fine. And the other change I was going to propose here is with regard to nine B, small r on the number one, to take out religious assembly from the list with regard to solid waste transfer facilities, with the understanding that religious assemblies in residential zoning districts still have a 500-foot distance, but if they're in a business or industrial area, they will not have that setback.
Okay. Is there anything else on nine? I'll go in.
Do we have to change, Ms. Pease, do we need to change something then under six B, where we talk about religious assemblies there on the first page? Were you talking about 500 feet from the lot line of any academic school, hospital, religious assembly?
Um.
The landfill.
That's a landfill.
Yeah, it's a landfill, but still, if we're willing to have it, the landfill within 500, if a religious assembly is in an industrial area, it's an indoor use. I guess I see that as probably of the same nature.
So if I get your drift right, you're saying that religious assemblies can be close to the solid waste transfer facility and to landfills?
Yes. If they're in an industrial or commercial zone. And the reasoning for that is that they're more of an indoor use compared to residential or schools and that if they're in a commercial or a industrial area and it's okay to have, if commercial and, well, yeah, then we want the landfill to be, you know, in an industrial area, for example, so.
Question for staff.
And here I assume when they say landfills, they're also talking about those collection stations and places like that?
No, that's a transfer site.
That's a transfer station and that's not this?
No.
Well, you're not the head.
So for example, the Sand Lake Pit, if there were, was that a landfill, the Sand Lake Pit? No.
No. No. We have our main landfill for the municipality out near Eagle River and then we have a transfer station off the old Seward Highway.
You know, I guess since landfills are such occasional, there's one in the whole community, I don't really see a big problem with, if people want to leave religious assembly in with regard to a landfill, that's, that seems okay to me. The transfer site in the Dowling area, that's kind of what I had in mind. If the church goes into a storefront nearby there.
We already have a church nearby there.
Right, and it hasn't moved. So, yeah, I think, I think, let's, I'm okay with leaving it in the landfill just because I don't think we're going to have that many landfill sites, but for transfer site, we may need another one of those, so let's leave the option open and take out religious assembly as a separated, the use with a special separation.
Also, before we leave that, I need to verify something on my notes, Nancy. You had said to change the drop-off hours to 10 to 6. Were you being specific about Saturday or Saturday and Sunday?
I would say both Saturday and Sunday, there could still be collection of accumulated materials between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Okay. So, does that take care of nine? Is there any objection? Hearing none, nine is okay. Mr. Weddleton, you're on number 10 now.
All right, number 10. Development and design standards. Any issues on this? I think. No issues, so it's accepted as presented?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to?
That's it.
That's it. So the trick is now to come out of the committee of the whole, so you need to make a motion for that, Mr. Weddleton.
I move to get out of the committee as a whole.
And who's going to second that for me?
Push the button.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Isham seconded the motion. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we're back in our formal meeting mode and we now need a motion to approve the action of the commission as a committee of the whole.
So moved.
Is that you again, Mr. Weddleton?
Oh, there, I got it now.
Thank you. And Mr. Frederick seconded this motion. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, my understanding is, did we hold that one? We held?
Yes, it's held out and so you just, it's, what would be good is for you to articulate which ones of these we approved and which ones we held.
Okay, in regards to the case 2010-18, Title 21 Rewrite, follow-up Sections One, we've accepted staff recommendations on issue one as presented. On issue two, accepted those as presented along with staff's recommended changes on the handout we received today. On issue three, we accepted that as presented. On issue four, we accepted it as presented with the change recommended by staff on the handout we received today. On issue five, we accepted that as presented. Issue six, we accepted as presented. Issue seven, we accepted it as presented. Issue eight, we held for later work. Issue nine, we amended to accept as amended. Should I list the amendments or just, we have the notes from the?
We have the notes from the committee of the whole.
That's from the discussion with added. Issue 10, we accepted it as presented.
Does that conclude your discussion?
And that's, well, I think the changes have filled in some gaps in the provisionally adopted Title 21 Rewrite.
Is there any further discussion by commissioners? Hearing, seeing none, is there any objection? Hearing none, that motion is approved.
Okay, actually, Commissioner Pease, we had that issue with the, did you let the parking go?
No, we're holding that.
That was eight, okay. All right, thanks.
Now, Mr. Weddleton, did you wish to bring that other item you had mentioned forward as a separate motion?
I don't think I was getting much support for that, so I think I let it go.
I don't think we're either. Okay, so that brings us to the end of our agendas. Please tell me we don't have more to act on tonight.
No, this is Section Two for the February 8th.
Okay. And so we have come to the end of our agenda for the evening and, thank you. We currently, as I understand it, do not have any cases on our February 1st meeting, so we will not meet February 1st. I believe we do meet February 8th on Title 21 items, is that correct?
Yes, but I just passed out.
Yes. And then do we have a meeting, someone mentioned we have a meeting on February 16th, is that correct? I'm not sure. Nobody, hold on, our secretary's going to check her calendar. I thought one of the folks from zoning and plating mentioned that to me tonight, but I may have been confused.
It's not on this calendar.
Well, it doesn't, that isn't, doesn't necessarily mean anything, the 16th. Well, February 16th, yeah. I don't see anything, so I guess we're, as it stands now, it looks like we're having just one meeting on February 8th. Mr. Frederick?
If I might, just to take a moment of privilege or whatever, I'd like to acknowledge my lovely wife, Linda, coming along with us tonight. She's been curious of what I spend my long Monday evenings doing. Now she knows for sure it's not a girlfriend.
I can assure you.
And in fact, not anything nearly that exciting.
And Linda and women have the planning commissioner very friendly, Mrs. Frederick.
And although I don't know this for a fact, I suspect she probably won't be back again real soon, so.
Yeah, as you can tell, we have a lot of fun on Monday nights and this is one of our better nights. It was a lot more fun than last Monday night. Well, thank you, Mr. Frederick, for introducing us to your wife. Any comments from any commissioners?
No, she wasn't.
Well, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
And it's been seconded by Mr. Frederick. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we're adjourned. And Ms. Pease, did you?